Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, February 19th Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting. Kathleen, could you give us a roll call? Let's see who's here.
Commissioner Hill. Commissioner Marks.
Here.
Commissioner Mazza.
Here.
Vice Chair Jennings.
Here.
Chair Euring.
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right.
I move the agenda to be approved as staff recommends.
Second.
I.
Kathleen, posting the agenda, sorry.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on February 8th, 2019.
Okay, thank you very much. Bonnie, are we going to do the fire update here? You want to?
If we could come back to that, that would be great.
We can do that, okay. Oral and written communications from the public. Do we have any, Kathleen? No oral and written communication from the public. This meeting is moving very quickly. Good.
I think we're ready now.
We're ready, all right. So we're going to back up and do a quick presentation on the update on the Woolley Fire rebuild process. Richard, you're going to give us that?
Yes, thank you, Chair Euring. Just to start with, we just want to reiterate the three options that folks are pursuing. And the first of those options is the in-kind replacement of the structure where it's generally in the same location, square footage is generally the same or less. And that type of option we do through what's called a planning verification. And I do understand that last week at the Planning Commission meeting, or excuse me, the City Council meeting, that code amendments were adopted that will change this. However, those code amendments will not take place or become effective until about the middle of March. So at this point in time, the in-kind replacement is still putting the same home back in roughly the same place, and square footage the same. The next option there is the in-kind replacement plus the 10% addition. Right now, we do that under what's called an administrative plan review. Once the amendments that were made at the last City Council meeting take place, that process will be an over-the-counter application as well, and done through the planning verification, unless the addition that someone proposes is above 18 feet and we need to process a discretionary approval of some sort, like a site plan review. And then lastly, of course, is the coastal development process. If someone wants to drastically change what they had, location, size, or somehow the design of it. The total amount of structures that were affected by the fire were 821, and that's not to say 821 properties because one property could be double counted because you would have a destroyed home and say a destroyed barn. But of the structures, both accessory structures, second units or guest units, and main residences, 821. And as you can see, it was only two commercial structures that were destroyed and one damaged. So we have not seen many commercial projects other than just working with the native motel. They are the only one at present. To date, we haven't approved, I believe since our last approval, we haven't issued any more temporary housing approvals so that folks can get to the building and safety department so they could work on obtaining permits for electrical and septic hookups and the actual placement of the structure. That number has stayed the same since my last report. However, the planning verification number has increased. We've received a total of 34 applications, 29 of which have been approved. Most of those, as you can see, have been same-day approvals. Right now, the reason why some of these are taking a bit longer is because we want to double-check, say it's a landscaping plan or something a bit unique, and that's the reason why those aren't being turned around within the hour. And the number of administrative plan review submitted is still the same as it was at the previous Planning Commission. It's seven of them, and to date, still only one has been approved. And the reason for that has been the materials that are being reviewed by the referral agencies. We have not been able to deem those other six applications complete so that we could approve them. So we are trying to work with the agencies and the applicant to speed up that process so we can get those deemed complete and issue approvals. Some important upcoming events relating to the fire rebuild and the code amendments is that the local coastal program amendments that were heard by the City Council last week are going to be before the Planning Commission on March 7th, or excuse me, the Coastal Commission meeting, on March 7th. And that meeting will take place at the California African-American Museum in Los Angeles. The address is 600 State Drive, and we are item TH13B, and that'll be the Woolley Fire For those who have still not opted in or opted out of the Fire Debris Removal Program, the county still has their removal operations center open for the public to visit. At present, it doesn't appear that that'll be closed anytime soon. It looks like it'll be open at least for the next couple of months. And if anybody has not entered either an application to opt out or filled in the papers to opt in, it's important that they contact the county. The county official will be at City Hall again tomorrow. He was here today. While the deadline has passed, they do want anyone who's interested in registering to come in and register because soon the next step will be a compliance and abatement program, and it would be a lot easier for everyone if homeowners came in and registered so that we could avoid the abatement process. And some upcoming community service programs will be taking place. There's one on Sunday, March 3rd. It's an evening of healing and uplifting classical music. And then again, on the 9th of April, there'll be a rebuilding resilience after fires meeting and talking about lessons learned from Australia. And on the 22nd, there will be a meditation program. And those programs are on the city's website for anyone interested in more information or addresses and times. And once again, just want to remind folks that if they go to the malibu city.org and type in Malibu rebuilds at the city's website, we have information there on what handouts to help with the rebuild process are available. Those same handouts can be found at City Hall, and we still have information posted on the debris removal program. And as always, if anyone signs up for emergency alerts with the city, that would be good because we've been sending out notifications with any changes in terms of debris removal or rebuild information, as well as any alerts related to the rains that we're having in the fire areas. Thank you, and that concludes our presentation.
Richard, thank you very much. Bonnie, do you want to add anything before we get questions?
I just wanted to add that there was a workshop that was on fire rebuilds. I think it was called Fire Rebuilds 101 that was held at the library on Saturday, and we had city staff there. It was sponsored, I believe, by a neighborhood, but there was city staff there as well as, I believe, fire department representatives, some other people, just to give general information. Apparently, it was a packed house, and people found it useful. There was a little bit of confusion about certain points of information that we tried to, staff tried to clear up at the time, but I just, that's just to say that city staff is also planning to hold a fire rebuild workshop to kind of coincide with the effectiveness date of the fire rebuild ordinances, ordinance. So that will occur in early March. We haven't set a date yet, but we'll keep you updated on that, just to make sure we get the best information we can out there.
Just real quick, that meeting was on YouTube someplace, because I watched part of it, and it seemed like it was very informative, so, you know, but, okay.
Bonnie, it was reported to me at that meeting that the fire department lowered the fire flow requirements to one hour instead of two hours. Is that right?
I heard the same thing. I have not heard that on, in an official way, but I'm hopeful that that will eventually get to be an official thing.
Now, would that do any good if your fire hydrant is pumping 1,250 gallons a minute? Then it doesn't matter whether it's one or two hours.
I mean, that's not going to fix every problem, that's for sure.
Okay. Richard, you talked about SPRs. Does any of this stuff that goes through your automatic system come to the Planning Commission like an SPR?
No, those would not go to the, excuse me, no, those would not go to the Planning Commission. It would, the equivalent would be the administrative plan reviews that we process today. It's important to realize that no one is going to be able to achieve something without going through the proper channels. So in other words, if something required a coastal development permit, say, they want to do an addition to their house, and if they, that house was there today, and they came in today and they applied for it, we would tell them you need a coastal development permit. They're not going to be able to achieve that through the fire rebuild. If you need a coastal development permit for something, you will still need that coastal development permit. The site plan review process and the administrative plan reviews, that essentially is already in place today. There is an exemption if you're within, for example, the appeal jurisdiction. You could apply for a administrative plan review, provided that whatever you're doing doesn't increase the height of the building more than 10%. So if you had a 20-foot-tall home that was within the appeal jurisdiction and you wanted to raise the height 10%, you could do that administratively. However, if you wanted to, say, raise that height 15%, that would then require a coastal development permit because it's beyond the exemption. The Coastal Commission is allowing, in the code, for fire rebuilds and disaster replacements, folks are allowed a 10% addition, which is consistent with everything else of what's exempted in the coastal act.
Would a neighbor be notified if, what happens when there's a view consideration?
Yes, that, that-
Do they automatically get to block the view for 10%?
No. If the home is proposing construction, for example, we had a project today where someone wanted to do an addition to the home that was above 18 feet in height, and there was a primary view determination on that neighboring home, we explained to the applicant that if they wished to pursue this, it would be through a site plan review process in which we would have sent out, we would have required story polls, and we would have sent out a notification to properties within 500 feet. And in this particular case, the house next door did not burn, so that homeowner was in an ideal position to see if this complied with their PVD or not.
Now, if you have a PVD, or you want a PVD, and your house burned down, can you get one? Or do you have one, if you had it before?
Any new primary view determinations, we would need to wait until a structure is put back on the property because by the nature of the code, a primary view determination has to be taken from a living area at a certain height, and you need to document that. So we would need to have the structure in place to do that. At present, if anyone proposes any additions, what we're doing is looking at the PVDs in our area so we could figure out where we might have any sort of issues.
Well, the second part of that question is, if you had a PVD and your house burned down, did you lose it? Or do you assume that that's where your house was and that's where it was determined?
As Richard is saying, you know, it's, the documentation of the PVD will help us. We don't want to penalize somebody for something they had just because their house burned down. That's, you know, like a double whammy. So we will use the evidence that we have the best that we can to determine what views were there and protected.
Any questions?
Yeah, both Chris and I attended that meeting. It was put on by Operation Recovery, which was a revival of the group that started after the 93 fire. And Jessica Thompson from Planning was there and did a creditable job, along with Andrew Sheldon, to explain the situation. I agree with you that some of the information was not quite consistent with what I had gotten from other sources, but I think that part of the problem is that maybe there wasn't quite enough appreciation that the target is moving and is kind of slippery still. So hopefully, when the ordinances that were passed by the City Council last Monday get, become effective, things will be a little bit clearer. In the meantime, however, since we're directing people to go to Operation, or to whatever it is, Malibu Recovery, it seems like it might be a good point to put a little banner up someplace saying, you know, these rules could change because the information on temporary structures is all from the currently existing planning. There's no mention of the fact that the rules are going to change or may change. Similarly, with the information that Richard just put up showing that anything, that the 110% option is going to be through an administrative plan review rather than planning verification, just needs to be some sort of warning to people because people read this stuff and they take it, okay, well, that's the way it is. And then if they come back in the middle of March, they're going to see that the rules are different, hopefully better, but the rules at least will be, will be different. And also, on the debris removal part of the scale, the county does have a website that they put up, which has a sort of a dashboard, which shows, it's got a big map. It shows all of the affected properties. It shows which ones have been surveyed, which ones have been partially cleared, which ones, there's about five categories of things that they have to do in order to be turned back to the county from the state, and it shows by color coding each of the properties that's been done. I'm not suggesting that the city might want to do that, but I think that as helpful and as user-friendly as planning has been, it doesn't necessarily carry through to all departments in the city yet, and it might be a good idea to have a kind of a dashboard showing not only how many applications have been received, but how many permits have been issued. And I take it we're probably, on the temporary structures, we're probably still at zero on that point. But, you know, 16 have been applied, 16 have been granted by planning, but there's a process you have to go through. Looking at the, at the simplest form, the application form that you have up for people who simply want to do a like-for-like exchange, it's very simple. The planning requirements are very simple. You just have to come in with the required documents, but when you page through and you get down to buildings, to Public Works, you better have your grading plan and your storm water pollution prevention plan and all the rest of the stuff put together. So in many cases, it looks to me like Public Works is treating this pretty much like they would a coastal development permit. In fact, they, in several places, reference the requirements of the LIP, which, since this is an exempt project, shouldn't apply, but go figure. So hopefully, we'll be able to talk about some more of those changes as the process moves forward. That's it, thank you.
Craig?
Yeah, I went to the ad hoc disaster recovery meeting last week, and one thought that arose in the context of Don Schmitz talking about individual water tanks for houses, it occurred to me, you know, we're, and as regards the fire department saying that they want to be flexible where they can be on the grandfathering of things like access roads and fire flows and whatnot. A tank might take three, four years maybe to get built and installed, and on the other end of the spectrum, we're not going to have a fire mature ecosystem for 10 or maybe 15 years before it's ready for a big conflagration again. So there's some rationale that maybe can be presented to the fire department about identifying this as something less than a high-fire-risk area for that period, or for, you know, for five years, say, for either a limited area or on a house-by-house basis. But it just seems like the fact that we have the blanket high-fire risk right now is not necessarily applicable to a lot of these sites, and that might be the nexus for finding some flexibility on their part. Thank you.
Mr. Marks?
Well, as Commissioner Jennings pointed out, we did attend the Operation Recovery Malibu. That rebuilding 101 session was informative. We kind of talked that through a bit. One thing I just wanted to call out is, you know, personally, our community is being hit by these rains. Everybody that's traveling through Malibu or lives in the low-lying areas, just continue to be aware of, you know, what's happening above you. Anytime you've got a hill above you and it's raining, I think something might come down on you. And if you're down low, just get out of town if you've got a lot of rain coming. I knew Malibu West and some other communities been hit, so keep aware.
Yeah, one more.
A house burned down across the street from me that was an old 50s house. It was probably 1,800 square feet at the most. And last week, they cleaned it up, and it was, it was nothing to be afraid of. There was, they were very efficient. They, but you will have probably up to 10 dump trucks parked on your street at any given time. They had a lot of, they had a bulldozer and a big scoop, but they were very efficient. They had flagmen. They got it done as fast as they could, and then they were gone. So they did an outstanding job. Now, this wasn't a big house. I don't know what it takes for a big house, but I would say a total of 40 dump truck loads. It's quite a bit they hauled away.
I'll just confirm that what John said earlier, the representatives that were there on last Saturday did confirm that they were changing the fire flow requirements from 1,250 gallons per minute for two hours to one hour. I think John makes a good point that since there was no water in the, in the fire hydrants near my home, it doesn't seem to make much difference how many hours they could flow for.
Okay. Just real quick, Richard, the number of people who have not signed up for either the self-determination method or the, we have any idea what the latest numbers are?
I don't, excuse me, I don't have new numbers for this week. As of last week, it was, I believe, it was somewhere around 40 to 50%. The issue that we're having is that the numbers we're getting back from the county, they aren't quite adding up right. And I think what's happening is they might be blending some county addresses with city addresses, and so we're having a hard time figuring that out.
Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation. Good information to have. Bonnie, you were-
I was just going to add that the information, the latest information I heard this afternoon on signing up or not signing up was, I believe, around between 60 and 100 people had not signed up. I think it was 60. And I also wanted to mention that the county, while the deadline has not been officially extended, the county is still accepting applications. The county representative is still here at City Hall. He was here today, and I think we'll see him the rest of this week. If people still have not opted in or opted out, it's, there's still an opportunity to do that, and we'd encourage you to do that. And then, unless you have any other comments, I'll just make a few remarks.
No, go ahead.
As Richard mentioned, the Coastal Commission will be hearing the LCP amendment on Thursday, March 7th. I'm not sure why it's at the University of Southern California campus. It's not really a coastal location, but that's where they're, they're holding their meeting. They are processing it as a minor amendment. The City Council will be hearing the second reading of the ordinance and adoption on February 25th. Also, on February 25th, the City Council will be considering the neighborhood character/mansionization issue that has been discussed quite a bit here. So that item will be on that meeting as well. Let's see. And I think I already mentioned, we're planning a fire rebuild workshop for early March, and that is all for my remarks.
Are there anything additional, anybody want to add? Jeff? Craig?
Yeah, I'd just like to add that there were a number of plastic sandbags all over the tide pools at Big Rock Beach over the weekend. It was dozens, maybe hundreds of bags, and it prompted me to look at the code on plastic sandbags, and to distill it down to what it says in plain English is, they are completely banned, but, and you can't even use them temporarily, but if you show due cause, you can use them for 30 days. And the rain started over 30 days ago, and I don't know how you show due cause to use a sandbag. Or you can use them on an emergency basis until the hazard has abated, which is potentially indefinite in Malibu. And first responders can still use them whenever they want. So they're banned, but they're not really banned, it seems. So I just, you know, wondered, that's maybe something to revisit at some point.
Can I comment?
Yeah.
It's my recollection that the City Council waived the rules on sandbags at a meeting, several meetings ago.
Well, because it's an emergency, but that sort of begs the question, when do you use sandbags that's not an emergency?
When you, when you do your, when you do your new construction plan.
Commissioner Marks, anything?
Nothing more, thank you.
John, anything else from you? Done?
I'll talk about the lights maybe.
Okay. I just have a couple. Let me get to the one. A couple of meetings ago, Commissioner Mazza mentioned the configuration of lights that sits in the corner of Webway and Civic Center Way. And I sort of just didn't pay much attention until the last couple of weeks, I've started to get a bunch of calls on that, okay? So I figured I'd go out and take a look. And what I found was that configuration's got eight poles, it's got 19 stoplight fixtures, it's got four no-U-turn signs. It has eliminated the sweet little right-hand turn we used to have coming down Civic Center Way, which allows you to get over to Webway. When it rains, it built its own little waiting pool right there on Civic Center Way, and the whole thing is lit up all night long. So I went up, now, this, and just to remind everybody, this was an intersection that for the past 40 years or so was controlled by four stop signs. So I started asking questions, just try to help some people out. Didn't learn much, but I did learn a couple of things. One, this configuration was designed by a firm out of Kansas City. And why we went to Kansas City is a good question. The second thing I learned was, this was never reviewed by either the Planning, Planning Commission, Public Works Commission, or the Public Safety Commission. And I know that there was a comment earlier that said this was approved as part of the coastal development permit for La Paz, but I went back and looked at that, and there was, there's no definition of what the configuration was going to be, all right? So it just says you've got to put a stoplight in, or a signal, but nobody defined how. So brought up a couple of questions, all right? One, why did we go to Kansas City to get a firm to design this thing? How was that firm vetted? I didn't, I don't remember any RFPs going out saying, you know, who's going to do what? Who in the city signed off on that configuration? Don't know. And some of these things I've asked but can't get answers for. And then finally, who made the decision not to bring it in front of the Public Works, Public Safety, and Planning Commission? You know, those people are us, right? I mean, they represent us, and they're the only ones, if they're going to get, if we're going to have a voice in some of these projects coming down, they're the people to give us this voice. To exclude them just does make a whole bunch of sense to me. So this is an ongoing story. I've got some more work to do. I'm going to try and get answers to this thing, but it resembles the crosswalk at Malibu Beach Inn. All right? And if that's, if it did, that's not a good thing, but we'll get more of that information to you as we move along. That's all I've got right now.
Comment. It's not only that stoplight.
Comment, I, it's not only that stoplight, I mean, our general plan and a lot of other things say we should avoid urbanization. That stoplight belongs in Inglewood next to the airport. But on top of that, I've got probably ten phone calls this week about grading on the Bell property. And now I noticed, driving up here today, it's completely covered with gravel, and the city's property on the Chili Cook-Off site is completely covered with gravel. So that's eighteen acres of gravel, uh, which is a lot of gravel, and never, I never heard of it, I never heard it come to the Planning Commission, I never heard of a grading, uh, anything, and, and I can understand where, where small projects can be done administratively, but when you do eighteen acres? And I got a bunch of calls about the being done next to an eschen. I think somebody's gotta go to, at some point, there has to be a level at which it goes to some kind of public review, before you start driving along and you see a bunch of dump trucks and a bunch of, uh, whatever is happening, happening. And then there should be some way to correct screw-ups, like the, what I consider that light as a major screw-up. We can take maybe eight of the seventeen lights out. I don't need six red lights to tell me I can't go forward. Um, and it might look a little bit better, but again, there has to be some way that, that these get reviewed by somebody who actually lives here. Agreed. That's it, Bonnie, you have any, or Trevor?
Um, I'll just comment on, um, I can just add a little bit to the traffic light discussion, um, it, the, the addition of a signal at that intersection, or multiple signals, was, as Commissioner Euring mentioned, Chair Euring mentioned, a requirement for mitigation as a result of the La Paz project and also the Whole Foods project. The complete design of the intersection, uh, may not have been included in there. Um, I believe in the Whole Foods project, it, there was a picture, um, an aerial picture at least, of what the, that it would involve, um, six lanes, adding lanes and things like that.
There were graphics of the road changes, but nothing about the configuration of the stoplights.
Of the stoplights, yeah. So the, the project, those projects get, um, designed, and I, I can't tell you all of the details of this because it's the Public Works Department that oversees it, so, um, for more information, that would be the place to go. But the Public Works Department, um, works with the applicant, um, on the design and applicant contracts for that to be done and completed, so that's why there's not a city bid process for that, it's, it's done at the applicant's expense. But the Public Works Department oversees the design and that sort of thing.
Uh, and, and that, very likely what happens, my concern is, I wanna know who from the city looked at this?
Right.
Did somebody check out this firm? Did someone look at, you know, does this make sense for what we need here in Malibu? Did our traffic consultant look at, who signed off on it? And who picked the firm?
Well, and that, those are questions I can answer, but I was just filling in the parts that, that I know.
Right, I mean, 'cause my concern is, you know, we're, 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 Malibu Beach Inn crosswalk, stoplight, our projects that were put in place to service what the commercial developers were looking for, who's looking care, who's taking care of what the residents need, right? Who's sitting on those things and saying, from the people who live here, who drive here, what do we gotta do to make sure we bet them taking care of? We don't have answers to any of those things, it's just stuff I was thinking about, driving down here. All right, uh. Let's move along. Exactly. Wonder. I'd like to pull three B three and three B-
Sorry, Chair Euring, if you'd like to hear more about the property down below, I can explain about the permitting of that as well.
Yeah, I think, a good, I mean, there's a lot of comments- It's a great idea because they cut off all the emails.
Um, the, the project, um, on the Bell property, um, as it's kind of informally known, is, um, it's preparation by Southern California Edison for a lay-down yard, and the urgency around that has arisen because, um, they are in the process of conducting throughout the entire very high-fire hazard area, um, an inspection and repair program for fire hazards at all of their, um, facilities. They're starting with Malibu first, and in order to keep us, as the first city, um, involved in these inspections and repairs, we wanted to, um, permit the use of that property, um, as quickly as possible so that we kept our, our place in line. Um, if they're, expected to be there approximately ninety, maybe up to a hundred and twenty days. The, um, initial site preparations were processed with an over-the-counter permit, which was just to allow grubbing of the site and, um, installation of best management practices for erosion control and that, that sort of thing. Um, we processed an emergency coastal development permit for the temporary use of the site for the lay-down yard. It will have not as many trucks as the, um, emergency response, um, lay-down yard that was, uh, placed on the city's property across Stewart Ranch Road. Uh, I think it'll be not quite half as many trucks that will be staged in and out of there to do the repair work. Um, there is, or there, a, a wetland, um, has been identified on the adjacent property to the west, down at the very bottom, and, um, Edison is going to be setting back from that area, um, to allow the required a hundred-foot, um, wetland buffer setback. So, um, they're working with the city biologists to make sure that that is, um, accommodated, and then at the end of the term of the emergency CDP, they'll be restoring the property back to its, um, original condition. And then the Public Works Department has worked with them on erosion control measures and, um, also just traffic staging and, um, to make sure that it doesn't interfere with, um, uh, rush hour traffic and things like that. Um, and then, so, at the end of the time, the property will be restored, the fencing will be removed, and, um, and that's, hopefully all will be good.
Quick, go ahead. Yeah, um, so we're first, does that mean that other cities are gonna drag their equipment over here and fix it over here?
No, this is just for the work within the city of Malibu.
Okay, and then-
And it's not just the fire burn area, by the way, it's the entire city that they're gonna be inspecting and conducting repairs.
So, uh, some of, some telephone equipment has toxic stuff in it, is, it's like transformers and things, are they-
They won't be conducting any repairs on that property, they're, they're just simply staging trucks.
They're just parking.
Right.
Okay, uh, now, when you say it's gonna be restored back, that means they take out all the gravel.
Right.
And are they gonna take out all the gravel on the Chili Cook-Off site? Which was another emergency permit.
I think that gravel is staying.
Because?
Because the, it's useful for the other uses that the city has been using that property for.
So will we get, uh, will we approve that emergency permit at some point?
That-
And review that?
Uh-
We're supposed to re, we're supposed to review an emergency pit every, within ninety days of issuance or something like that?
Um, for emergency coastal development permits, there's supposed to be a follow-up CDP within ninety days, that's, that's right.
So we'll get one of those.
Um, that property, there was not a, an emergency permit process for that one, there was one for this SCE lay-down yard.
So we'll, so we'll get a, we'll get a, reported to us within ninety days.
Um, well, it, they have to apply within ninety days, but this work will be done and removed within ninety days.
Okay, which still means they're gonna report, right? In other words, if you can do it within ninety days, you don't ever have to tell anybody.
Well, they, well, it, it, there's not gonna be anything left to permit after ninety days.
Okay, was my understanding, emergency permits had to be ratified by the Planning Commission.
That, it, that's, the requirement is that if, uh, that when an emergency CDP is approved, that, um, a follow-up, regular coastal develop, coastal development permit be processed. And it's supposed to be submitted within ninety days.
But there's an exception to that.
With the work is-
If they're gone within ninety days, you don't do it.
Well, that was, we're gonna look at that, whether it makes sense to process it, but that's what the rule says.
All right, folks, uh, sorry to take you through that. Back to the consent calendar, John, you started the- I'd like to pull three B three and three B four, and, uh, uh, what do you call it? Accept the other items. All in favor?
Move the other items per staff's recommendation?
Yes. All in favor?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Yes.
All right, yes.
Okay.
Did you want a full staff report, or you just want to hear from the applicant?
Good evening, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Uh, the project before you tonight is a request to extend the Planning Commission's approval of coastal development permit zero-seven dash one-five-five. The project is a, is a request, um, to extend the construction of a new duplex and associated development at two-five-three-six-zero Malibu Road. To date, the applicant has obtained Planning Department approval to submit for building plan check and obtain building permits to commence work on the soldier pile wall for the building. However, in the summer of two thousand and eighteen, the applicant determined that the construction of the piles as designed was not feasible. The applicant is requesting additional time, um, until November of this year, uh, to update plans, uh, for the pile wall and commence construction. Based on unforeseen geo-geotechnical design issues, the applicant has demonstrated due cause, and therefore, staff recommends a one-year time extension for the project. That concludes staff's brief, brief presentation, available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Carlos. We've got a bunch of speakers slipped here, I don't know if there's any one, who's, who's the applicant? Is the applicant out?
Mr. Chairman, Lynn Cox, I represent the applicant, I would like to speak last, if that was possible, Mr. Chairman.
Well, you can speak for a minute, and then fourteen later. Well, come up, yeah, you can come up and speak for a minute, and then save your fourteen minutes for later.
Or thirty seconds.
Do you get three minutes or you get fifteen? I'm sorry, you only get-
You can let him go last.
Okay, then Lynn, I'm sorry, I thought, Lynn, excuse me, I thought you got fifteen minutes, you only get three minutes.
I realized.
So I'm gonna, well, you can go last if you wanna do that, so I don't screw you up.
You're gonna take the other people first, first?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so let's go back, I got Don Kowaleski.
Be, be, before we get into this, Trevor, can you remind the, the commission what the issue is on, when there's an application for, uh, to extend a permit? Uh, I'm afraid we're about to get into the process of trying to retry the, the hearing.
That's correct, this is not a reopening of the actual permit itself and the merits and the findings that were made for that permit, what's being examined here is simply whether there's due cause for the extension that's been requested, and whether they presented evidence of due cause for that extension, or if they haven't.
The other thing I forgot to do was do any disclosures.
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes, please do.
Yeah, um, I went and visited the site, and while there, I ran into a neighbor, and, uh, he couldn't point, well, I, I observed several things and he confirmed them, I don't know that I learned much beyond what's in the documentation, except, um, I don't know, I guess now is the time to note what I observed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any, anything that's affecting your decision that you learned?
Yeah, well, it's hard to say in light of, um, I mean, I, I, I feel like I'm now into my full discourse at this point, if, I don't know how to parse it to just tell you what I learned without-
It's in our staff report.
Okay, um, well, it just seems like there's a lot of uncertainty on the geology here. The Coastal Commission has acknowledged that all the way along, and we have a situation of dueling geologists. And so what I saw on the site was active movement that's not from thirty or forty years ago, it's moved more recently, and I can talk about the-
Is that a topic we should be covering with this?
If we're talking about what, what we've learned at the site-
Uh, you can talk about what you learned at the site, but in terms of the geology of whether the merits of the geologic study was proper originally in the approval would not be, uh-
Okay.
-pertinent.
To, I, to, to narrow it down, we're talking about the, the feasibility, and, at least in part, we're talking about the feasibility of the, the pile plan, right? And that has to do with the geology, and so I see a lot of uncertainty there. Um, I s, I see, I see movement on the site, and I saw a lot of evidence of that, that makes me suspect that the, the pile plan as presented, whether it's in eight-foot diameter piles or six-foot diameter piles, is not gonna be adequate. That's what I've seen on site, yeah.
What did you see on the, on the site?
Oh, I saw, okay, I saw, for, for example, three things. The front retaining wall that, that they're talking about replacing with the piles, the seaward side, has moved approximately five feet on the eastward side of the fault, uh, of the, the scarp there, has moved seaward, and has been replaced in, in recent years, rebuilt. Similarly, the retaining wall, the timber retaining wall at the landward side, back by the road, has fallen down or been pushed forward by land movement and replaced, and the sand on the site, on the middle of the site itself, has been evidently recently replenished, which would have the effect of disguising any potential fissure that were arising there, such as the photograph we've seen of the historic fissure down the center of the site. So we don't know if that fissure exists because it has fresh sand on top of it.
I can't quite remember if I was on the Planning Commission at the time or not, but I was involved in the hearing when it was originally heard, and I think I, I was the, signed the, uh, extension as chairman, uh, but I was at that hearing, I don't remember a huge amount about it. Marx?
No disclosures?
Uh, I just drove by the site and took a look, there's nobody there, so didn't learn anything that was in the staff report. Okay, so Don, you're up, you've got five additional minutes. Is Cor prude here?
Thank you.
Just verify everybody that's done any time.
Chase Garcia? Richard Harris? Stephanie? Very good. And Thomas, you're on.
Thank you. My name is Don Kowaleski, I'm an engineering geologist, and I was formerly the geologist for the city of Malibu, and as part of this project, I actually wrote some review sheets. My slideshow, which I've given you copies of, basically it says deja vu, should we do this all over again? If you go back in the history, and I'm not sure how I change slides on this, um, you go back through the history, we had previous geotechnical consultants for a developer on this project, by the way, first of all, the geological survey map is a landslide back in nineteen sixty-one and nineteen seventy-one, it still is that way, they were not wrong. But the next slide, we had geotechnical consultants for the developer, which said, there was no slide there, they did this twice. Um, it was foundation engineers back in sixty-two, sixty-six, no indication of a landslide. Then again, in nineteen seventy-two, seventy-three, they said, no landslide closer than forty to sixty feet to the property, all right? However, the county geologist reviewed it and says, you haven't supplied us what we need, no stability analysis, no real data here, so they did not approve it. However, the developer went to the county superintendent of building and safety and requested a variance, and he got, uh, variance, and he signed a hazard waiver, accepting responsibility for that, so that he'd build this residential building. In nineteen seventy-eight, Don Michael, E.D. Michael, who's a rep, uh, competent geologist here in Malibu, stated that nineteen seventy-eight, the landslide started to move, and it moved and destroyed several homes, and one of those homes is at two-five-three-six-zero, this exact property, and the reason why, this property is right on the edge of the landslide, so that part of it didn't move, and part of it did move, which meant the building sheared at the time that it was, um, there. And that's Don Michael's map, right there, showing the edge of it, and on the left-hand side, you say the Roland, that's the Roland was the developer of the property at the time, and you see the edge of that landslide went right through the middle of the building and tore the building apart. In nineteen seventy-eight, Kovacs buyer came in, tried to help Roland out, and says, here's what we can do to try and stabilize it, but they also said, they should stabilize the entire length of the landslide, because if you don't, and you only stop at a one piece, it's gonna break somewhere else, and somewhere else is gonna be a neighboring property. Los Angeles County said he's not gonna accept it because the debris may affect adjacent property. And by that was the chief of the county geologist. Right here's a photo of the property nineteen seventy-nine, where both structures, and you see those two chevron-shaped roof buildings, sort of on the left center of there existed, and the, the more easterly, on the one on the right, is no longer there, that's the property that we're looking at. Los Angeles County Geologist- Los Angeles County geologist in nineteen ninety, when someone finally tried to redevelop this property after the original building was torn down, asked the same question as everybody else. Will this affect offsite property if you stabilize this property? Again, in nineteen ninety-two, myself, now as the city's geologist, because of Mark, I mean, Bob Thomas was the county's geologist. City became a city in nineteen ninety-one. Nineteen ninety-two, I review it. I say the same thing. What's going to be the effect on the adjacent property? Malibu Road Assessment District was formulated because of landslides along Malibu Road. And they found out that in March of that, of nineteen ninety-eight, the landslide moved eight inches in March only. This is the map that came from that assessment district report and you see that the Roland property, which is on the, the left third of this, you can see that boundary of the landslide that moved in nineteen ninety-eight moved through the property, okay? This is that photograph that you saw and that's the grobber that developed in the sand. And if you look at the seawall, it's destroyed right there because it's shearing through the property. Then the consultant for the developer, which is MEC, which is the predecessor for Sasan Geosciences, come in and says, the northern portion of the site is underlined by active landslide, but they never addressed the larger landslide. And here is their geologic map. If you look, they have a symbol with these round circles with little crosses in them. And they have a line up near the road that goes horizontal or parallel to the road. That's the end of the landslide. Everything south of that, even with the offset seawall, what they show, they call it as beach sand over bedrock. They didn't even know what they're looking at. They didn't even look at the database that was already available. Are we going to make this ma, same mistake again? So once again, I showed you the map that was there before. Here's the photo in two thousand and two. That building is no longer there. And if you look closely, you can actually see that the seawall is offset in that photograph. In two thousand and two, the city geologist, once again, proposed mitigation measures cannot adversely affect offsite property. That's the city geologist, the city geologist today, although in two thousand and two, he made that statement. The current building code requires that you, whatever you do, cannot adversely affect offsite property. The building code says you must make a finding in your report regarding the safety of the site and the effect on offsite property. And then look at the difference between a finding and opinion. A finding requires data and opinions, I guess so, right? So geology review sheet by Christine and Doran Loyal, once again, said they must include a finding with respect to the effect on offsite property. City review again said adjoining properties experienced relatively less damage because the landslide's side scarp did not cross their properties. Where it did cross the property that we're talking today, that's the reason that, that building was destroyed. So the properties to the east of this property did in fact move in the landslide, but they weren't destroyed because it wasn't shearing through those buildings. They were rafting along. So city geologist brought that question up, but Sasan Geosciences didn't even address that. They said that their, that their wedge of material, which is their, their soldier pile wall that's going to protect this property, is not designed, it cannot be designed to solve the landslide problem that exists offsite. Meaning, we don't care about you other folks. We're going to save ourselves. The rest of you, sorry. That's basically what they said in their report. Sasan then said that the improvements will not have an adverse effect on the geological stability of the adjacent property. But guess what? That's an opinion. That was not a finding. They have no data presented anywhere in any of their reports showing that in fact they would not be affecting the offsite property. So here's the photo in two thousand and five. Once again, it looks very similar we saw before. You can still see the offset seawall on there. And so the ERB, Environmental Review Board for the city, it came before them and they asked specific question. They suggest maybe you could build only on the stable portion of this property and can deliver the unstable portion. Sasan Geosciences, once again, that's that same image we've seen before is where it was. And you see that the western portion is the pseudo-stable portion. It's in the ancient landslide, but not the active landslide. And Jeff Holt then wrote an email, but she was saying that it's very unlikely that the proposed development as currently planned will adversely affect adjacent property to the east. It's very likely that it will. And secondly, plans have not been revised as recommended. ERB recommended they build only on the stable portion, didn't revise the plans. Sasan Geosciences responded to that and said that the slope inclinometer, that's a device that's put in the ground to measure movement at the landslide bottom, moved four inches between July nineteen ninety-seven and April nineteen ninety-eight. However, if you look at the data on that, it wasn't between ninety-seven, ninety-eight. It was in six days of February nineteen ninety-eight. And there's the slope inclinometer reading itself. And if you look over hard at the, the right-hand side, you can see there was a six-day period that they had that much movement. Sasan, once again, misrepresents the facts. They've misrepresented the facts in this all the way along. Are we going to make the same mistake again and accept their data and say, sorry, we didn't know? We do know. So again, sir, Sasan never addressed the ERB question regarding the effect on adjacent property. But they said, the conventional method of construction recommended by this office and reviewed and approved by the city, review team is the most appropriate method of construction. Yes, for their property, but not affecting the properties on either side. Time up already? So the city obligation here is basically ask the building official to deny development. Do you have any questions? I'd be happy to answer those. Thank you.
Next speaker is Andrew. Conbatter. I didn't want to say that wrong. Go ahead, sir.
Hello. I own the adjacent multifamily building to the west of the subject property. Two five three six oh Malibu Road LLC has been a group of family investors since inception, run primarily by Jack and Saul Musry. Over the years, I've, I've only seen one of them at the property to meet consultants or contractors. The only time I've ever met their father, Nassim, was at hearings in this auditorium, when the entire Musry family would show up. Four years after they received final approval, Nassim passed away. I'm very sorry for the family's loss. However, it must be said that Nassim's passing could not have had much significance with respect to overseeing this development as the sons were the members of the LLC who had already been tasked with that responsibility for many years prior. Their expediter, Mr. Hecox, wrote to you, they are quote shocked with the design process as it pertains to the soldier pile wall. But it wasn't until last October that they submitted a report to city geology making the claim construction of the soldier pile wall is infeasible. What happened between November two thousand and thirteen and October two thousand and eighteen, that's five years. About all they did during that time was unsuccessfully market the property at nine and a half times what they paid for it. Rather than lowering the price, they ran out of time on their second extension and now they're trying to make a case for quote extraordinary circumstances, the threshold city code requires to extend a permit beyond five years. If Scheffler's Construction and Dakota Drilling are of the opinion the soldier pile wall as designed is infeasible, they would have had this opinion five years ago as well, when there was plenty of time to seek an alteration to the plans. FEMA's enforcement of new flood elevations has nothing to do with the developer's ability to proceed with this project. They had a permit to build. Had they started construction, they could have applied for a variance that would have ultimately allowed them to convert the use to single-family. The problem the developers face is not with the design process of the soldier pile wall. The problem is not with FEMA. The problem is the developers have done next to nothing over the last five years, other than attempt to sell the property for a nine hundred fifty percent profit. These are not extenuating circumstances. With all due respect, this is just ordinary procrastination and an attempted abuse of the city's permit process. Voting no on this permit extension will accomplish two things. One, discourage the abuse of permit extensions. And two, force the developers to start over and propose a safe development solution, given the active landslide that is moving again as we speak due to all the rain this season. Thank you.
Andrew, thank you very much. Next speaker is Mr. Mark Mansalero. And Lynn, you're up after him.
My name is Mark Maniscalco and I am the owner of two five three five zero Malibu Road, which is directly across from two five three six zero Malibu Road. My building is a multifamily property and also my primary residence. The first thing I asked when I was looking to purchase my home is what happened to the house next door? Because you can see the foundation buried sideways in the front of the lot. Everyone, everyone's response was that it got taken out in a slide in the nineteen eighties. I deal with the effects of the slides every day. I have to replace the flooring in my home every two years, repair cracks in the stucco every year and deal with windows and doors that don't always open and close properly. I put in over a hundred thousand dollars worth of pylon upgrades, new crossbeams, hardware to stabilize my home. I spent six figures ra, raising the foundation, making my home level. A few of my main pylons closest to this two five three six zero lot has been sinking for years and I just had to fix it and it's also sinking again. I read through all the documents presented by the group representing two five three six zero Malibu Road project. Nowhere in this project does the geologist talk about the safety of my building. It only talks about the vacant hillside to the north that has no structures on it. No geologist wants to put his license on the line by stating that the neighboring properties will not be affected. I hired my own independent geologist who is, he was here this evening. His findings reveal that my property will be the most affected by this project. As most of you know, years ago, the structure did exist at two five three six zero Malibu Road. You don't see it today because it was destroyed by the landslide. The structure that used to exist at two five three six zero Malibu Road had similar technology used for the foundation as my property. It was no match for the slide and it failed and the property was wiped out. If you allow an extension for the project to continue on this vacant lot, the new revision will have cheaper and less effective foundation and history will repeat itself. The new soldier wall will only protect the new structure and divert its landslide towards my home. My home is not just the home of myself. I have three other residents that live there as well as I have a four-unit building. If my home were to be lost, it would take years to get approval again and be in courtroom for years. Then once I rebuild, it would be continued domino effect down the road, passing the problem from one owner to another. I plead the commission to relook at the data for this project and not grant additional time for the project to be extended. The safety of Malibu homeowners and renters are at stake and no real data certifying that my property or the properties around mine will be safe. The only data that we really have is that a house once existed at two five three six zero Malibu Road. It was severely damaged during a landslide and had to be removed for public safety reasons. Thanks.
Mark, thank you very much. Lynn, you're next and you've got an additional minute, so you've got four minutes. Yes.
And the additional minute was from?
From Norm Heaney. Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for your time. My name is Lynn Hecox. I'll give you my last sentence first. The last sentence is, if you grant us an extension, we will have a revised soldier pile wall and a plan check within four months. You heard Carlos indicating that the original seawall that we've got, excuse me, soldier pile wall that was approved. We went through plan check. We had it designed. When I got retained in two thousand and sixteen, the family had done almost nothing on the project. All the prior issues had been litigated from two thousand and one through two thousand and thirteen. Geotechnical issues, eminent domain issues and so forth. When I got retained, they said, Lynn, how do we proceed? And I said, well, first of all, we need to process another extension. And then second of all, we need to get the structural engineer working on the design of a soldier pile wall because your house consists of three components. A soldier pile wall along Malibu Road, which is also part of a JHA, Geological Hazard Abatement District, and is being dewatered, which we're paying for to stabilize the area. It consists of a wooden seawall to protect the septic system and it's, it's going to have a piling system with two and a half foot cap beams to meet all the code requirements drilled into bedrock twenty, thirty feet. And I said, we're going to have to start the design with the structural engineer on the soldier pile wall if we're not going to proceed with the project. And they said, look, we've been trying to proceed with the project. People want the soldier pile wall approved and they don't want a duplex. They want a single-family home. I said, let's get the engineer working on the structural soldier pile wall. I'll process a permit to, and I told the commissioners last year, I was going to process a permit for the soldier pile wall. I was going to submit an application to do a, convert the single fam, to do, to convert this duplex to a single-family home. And I've done that. We're working on that. We ended up, it took about a year to design the soldier pile wall. And I looked at it and I looked at the engineer and I said, can we build this? Our lot is fifty feet wide. The engineer came up with five caissons, ten-foot diameter, extending into the earth about a hundred and fifty feet, over a hundred and fifty feet. And I said, how are we going to build something like this? Now, I've got a master of science degree in environmental studies and land use planning, my BS degree within zoology with a minor in chemistry. I've had a lot of math, but I don't know what these geotechnical engineers are doing. The geotechnical engineer was, I think, very qualified. Sasan, he's got some thick reports. And they come up with the load values, then the structural engineer says, well, to resist that load, I need to build ten-foot diameter caissons. And I said, guys, we went into plan check, we did a couple of checks, we got an approval from California Code Check. They were satisfied. Then we went to our engineer. He gave us a list of engineering contractors that could build our soldier pile wall. The Musry family went to these, one of them was Schefflin, one of them was Dakota Drilling. And they said, come out to the site. And they go, guys, your lot's only fifty feet wide. We can't fit our equipment on your lot to drill ten-foot diameter piles. I go, wait a minute, wait a minute. We need to get a different geotechnical engineer and a different structural engineer and put their heads together to solve this problem because we can't build a soldier pile wall fifty feet wide and ten feet deep. And we ended up finding a new geotechnical engineer and he, he reviewed the Sasan docs and said, Lynn, I don't think he's come to the right conclusions. And I go, okay. Concurrently, we found a new structural engineer. And he said, Lynn, the engineer's not thinking about how to design this thing. I have a different methodology. This guy is Perus Barar with a big engineering firm in Northern California. And he said, I'm going to put, prepare a presentation paper for the city geologist. The city geologist reviewed the presentation paper and he said, we will accept that design. Right now, he's going to design a seawall that's got forty inches diameter and half the depth. And we can have it into plan check in about four months. Right now, it's ninety percent completed. Thank you Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, for your patience.
Thank you very much. Anybody else would like to speak on the subject? If not, I will close the public session, bring it back up to the table. Comments? Jeff?
Well, yeah, I will reemphasize what I started to say earlier. When we have an extension request, the issue is whether the applicant has shown good cause for requiring the extension. We don't relitigate the main issues that led to the granting of the permit. Because if we did, then everybody, every applicant would bring, have to bring down their engineers and we'd have to do everything over, all over again, every time anybody asks for an extension. In this particular case, it was, I don't know whether it was approved by the Planning Commission or not. It was, it was approved by the city council, went to the, to the Coastal Commission. It was seen as a non-substantial issue there. So at some point, you know, I appreciate the concerns that, that the people have, but they've had their bite at the apple and, and apparently weren't able to convince the people who were making the decision at that time. So I, I don't think, unless we want to completely destroy our ability to function, we shouldn't relitigate these issues.
Anybody else? Craig?
One problem I see is that it, I, I don't feel like the geotechnical issues that are being cited as the extraordinary circumstances to provide due cause for the extension, I don't, I don't see that those issues are, can be unforeseen, given the history of serious persistent movement of the land here, so. And I've got, I've got a lot of stuff here about, again, back to the dueling geologists and the fact that Coastal said that it raised no substantial issue, but they also base that on, and this is their quote, the difficulty here is that due to the nature of the science, geologists can never assert with absolute certainty that stability will be guaranteed in the future. However, dot, 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 Dr. Johnson's professional judgment, judgment, dot, 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 consultants held to a very high standard. So it's almost like they're just saying, you know what, we don't know what's going on here and we're just going to believe somebody who sounds credible, but we still think there's uncertainty here. And so I don't, th, th, this unforeseen geotechnical stuff, it just seems like there's all kinds of analysis that has not been done with regard to the effects on the adjacent properties, with whether or not these smaller soldier piles can work. So I'm, I'm, I would be inclined to go with staff's alternative recommendation. They've also got issues about a new FEMA map and the fact that they want to be putting a single-family house instead of the duplex. That to me sounds like a new project. Sounds like they, what they're really talking about is going back to the drawing board.
Carlos, the way I read this, they had, they had a permit. They got approved on their ten-foot piles, right?
That is correct. They got approved in two thousand and eighteen.
And who, who decided it was infeasible? Was it the city or the applicant?
The applicant's geotechnical engineer.
Okay, so. This isn't a question, but it's my opinion that you can hold up Lake Mead with Hoover Dam. So there is the ability that's been approved to stop this movement. Now. Now, and Jeff's correct, we're not relitigating the geology, but they were given a permit, and it was, it was, then they decided to ask for a different one. And that's the key to me on an extension. Now, ten-foot-wide piles versus six-foot-wide piles, that's not what we decide, that's what somebody decides. But to me, that's a monetary decision. And I think there was enough time since they got the approval, and there was enough time since this project began, to figure out how to build on this property. And now that it comes up to the fact that we're now being told that, well, we'll figure it out in the next four minutes, four months, and then we're going to come in later and change the project after they have their permits, is not what's contemplating in extensions. Extensions are so you can get your permit. And so that, therefore, I'm not going to support the extension of time.
Commissioner Marks?
Yeah, I'm just trying to really parse LCP policy five, just the language down here that seems most relevant, is that the applicant has exercised due diligence in its effort to commence the project, such as contracting for and completing necessarily studies, reports, et cetera. From what we're hearing, in terms of what's come in the public comment, what's written, there's a long history here. It seems like there's been adequate time to get that information together. You know, it just doesn't seem like that, that, that kind of standard of the policy has been followed, so, you know, I'm not, I'm not leaning towards two years, hesitant on one and tending towards zero. Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? Can we get a motion?
I move that we deny the extension as staff's second. I guess that's all I need to move.
There'd be, there'd be a motion to deny the extension for their failure to demonstrate due cause and to diligently pursue the project.
That's what I meant.
Yeah. Anyone give a second?
I'll second.
Kathleen, roll call, please.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
I'm sorry, yes means that we're denying.
Yes is denial of the extension.
Correct. Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jennings?
No.
Chair Euring?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Moving along to three-B four. Staff report. Oh, excuse me, just, three-B four with staff report, please.
Good evening, Chair Euring. The project you have before you is requesting an extension of a coastal development permit that would allow for construction of a new single-family residence and accessory development, including grading. The applicant is requesting this extension because of difficulty they had starting off the project. This project, as you can see in the attached materials, was approved with the condition that they had to go back to the coastal commission and, and obtain some additional approvals. And then on top of that, the applicant began working with the water department in 2014 and continued to work with the water department up until around 2016 before they obtained approval in terms of a connection to the home with a backflow prevention device, but also to get the required water flow rates for the fire department. Since the last extension, the applicant has completed plan check on the single-family residence, as well as they began their grading and completed their grading. From discussions with the building inspectors, it appears that subsequent to the submittal of the extension request, a inspection did take place, and the final grading on the site was signed off. I spoke with the applicant, and they explained too that they've secured contracts recently, and they're looking at a mid-March start date on construction of the home. So there is progress to be made on the project, and I just want to reiterate that they do actually have an approved building permit in hand. It's just, they haven't actually started construction of the home, and that's anticipated, if the weather holds, to take place mid-next month.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any disclosures?
No.
No.
None.
None here. Any speakers? Nobody to speak. Okay, any Commissioner comments?
Do you ask if anybody wants to speak on it?
Yeah, just, anybody like to speak on this topic? Apparently not. We'll close the public hearing. Oh.
Good evening, Commissioners, Norm Heaney. I've done a fair amount of development, and when a person pulls a permit, a grading permit, and moves or compacts or meets the drainage requirements, in this case, probably a biofiltration system, they have actually started construction, and it seems to me like they're vested to continue with the construction. I've also pulled a lot of building permits, and I know how difficult that is. That is a year-and-a-half effort and costs a great deal of money. You can't start grading until you have a building permit. And so it seems to me like this particular applicant has put a lot of time, a lot of energy into this, and I would think that the extension should be valid. If it's not extended, then it seems to me like it's simply going to turn him back to file the same application, to go through the same process again. I don't know this applicant. I'm not familiar with the property. I'm just speaking out of, out of principle. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. Anybody else like to speak on this topic? If not, we will close the public hearing, bring it back up to the table. John?
Richard, I just want to point out an error in the resolution. It's section one-J, and it should be two thousand, April 2018, and February 2018, I believe, because April 2019 hasn't happened yet. Now, I'm looking at attachment two, which is dated December 22, 2017, which is the, asking for the extension. And it says, on September 7th, 2017, grading on the project was commenced, and we pulled our building permit. The clients are, fully intend on, to continue with construction of this home. That was a year-and-a-half ago. Has any, why, if they started construction on the home a year-and-a-half ago, why are we here?
The reason I discussed that with the applicant, to understand why this application was submitted, and their explanation to me was that they did that because they wanted to ensure that a valid coastal development permit was in place prior to the construction of the home commencing. But you are correct, they did obtain their approval and grading permit, and as you mentioned, yes, they commenced grading.
Okay, and then, maybe I missed it, but, so they did not commence construction, even though they said they were. Now, this letter's dated 2017. Is there a letter asking for an extension? For this extension? Because it's been determined by the coastal commission, if you don't ask, you don't get. So that's my second question.
What was the, sorry, I was...
Is there, is there a request for an extension? That stated...
Yeah, there's nothing in the staff report that says they want one.
There's no request for extension, except one dated a year-and-a-half ago.
That one was received by us on the 18th. If they mistyped the date or something like that, I, I don't know.
Says December.
Right, I don't, it may have been, it may have been submitted 2018.
Well, was the same letter submitted in December 2017? Did they just send in the same letter?
I believe the issue here is we attached, because we put this all together, and we did remove some attachments, this is the second, second-to-last extension letter. The most current letter is not attached.
So this one's dated Jan., stamped 2018, when he received it.
So there was, there was another request for extension, this was, that wasn't attached here?
Well, then, why would this be dated, well, that's, that's in, yeah, that's in 18, okay. Yeah, I need to, we need, we need that letter, we can't approve this extension.
Who are you going to extend this?
Well...
The other recital say, on December 20th, 2018, the applicant submitted an eighth-time request, which would be different from the date of December 22nd on this one. So is there a written request that was submitted on December 20th, 2018?
Yes, according to our database, one was submitted, it's just the wrong letter was attached.
Okay.
Okay, now, my question is, are you diligent if you said in December 2017 that sometime in the next year from now, which is over two years from then, you're going to start building, when you said you were going to start building a year-and-a-half ago?
I can't explain, I need the applicant to be present to explain what their delays were in grading, because the grading did commence, but as I mentioned, it was only recently signed off. There was an inspection, and according to our database, there was a date in there from December, and then from talking to the inspector, he completed all of the paperwork, and the grading was done last month.
Can I, can I, can I throw an idea out there? I, I mean, in order for us to make a decision, we didn't know, like in writing, I would think, what their reason is. I, I'd recommend we continue this. I mean, we...
If you have, I'll second that, if you have a motion.
I do have a motion, then, to continue this.
I'll, I'll second to continue to a date certain, which Bonnie will provide, actually, you should be making this, but whatever.
Go ahead.
To bring this back with proper evidence.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yeah, one of the reasons that these extensions come before us is because the city attorney's office takes a very restrictive view, as properly they should, over when construction commences and, and when a, a permit vests, right? And so, and, and it's, it's a different concept, the vesting of a permit and, and the commencement of construction. But once, once the project commences, and, and, as did in this particular case, grading started, and they pulled the building permit, that's the end of the, of the exercise. You don't have to have an extension after that point. People do it because they're afraid that someplace along the line, it's going to get yanked away from them, because there is a reluctance on the part of the city to say that, yeah, okay, your, your permit vests, but nonetheless, it's the case that in this particular case, construction has commenced, and that's the end of the inquiry. So I will oppose the, the motion to continue.
Well, is, is, just, I mean, hang on, is, is Jeff, I'm sure you are correct, but I mean, is, can we confer that that, what he's saying, this, we shouldn't even be here because this thing is, is already permitted?
I don't know the details about this, about whether, the facts on the ground, I don't know whether this is vested. It's a site-by-site exercise, and coastal commission does have a more lenient view of when construction's commenced and when these permits vest versus often what we would interpret. I don't know the facts on the ground in this particular case about exactly the details of what they've done on the site.
Well, I, I, whoops.
I think we ought to go back to his motion.
Yeah, and I...
Look, so we get the facts in front of us, get whatever documents they're supposed to have, and do it right.
And I'm still going to second his motion, exactly like I said. I just want to point out what Jeff said. If that is true, then they just don't show up, and they, they take their chances. So Bonnie, what date should we put in there?
I would say March 18th.
Okay, March 18th. Is that acceptable? Okay.
All right, so we'll make the... I, I would like to have a comment on this one. I haven't yet. Just so, to clarify, if they've done grading, does that, or does that not qualify as starting construction?
He just said that.
It does, right?
No, we don't know.
We don't know, okay. Because they have started grading. Okay. And then, for the continuance, we don't have, what we'd want, I think, is some kind of documentation from Water Works or Caltrans about the story about the backflow device, whether that is in fact what they're asking. So we want some documentation on that.
Yeah, whatever, whatever their justification is. So I'll restate my motion to continue the study to March 18th, asking for additional supporting evidence of why they're requesting this extension.
Why the due cause exists.
Yes, yes.
End of request, and I accept that as a second.
Kathleen, roll call. Kathleen, roll call, please.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Chair Euring?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, moving along to item 5A. And Richard, you saved yourself a trip. All right. This is a coastal development permit number 17-102, site plan review number 17-057, minor mod number 18-018, application for remodel and addition of a new second unit. We have a staff report.
Good evening, Commissioners. What you have before you this evening is the remodel of an existing home. The reason why we've processed some of the require, additional requests, such as the site plan review, or, excuse me, the minor modification to reduce the size of the home, is because this proposed remodel will go beyond the 50% threshold, and for that purpose, we're looking at the home in terms of entitling it as a completely new home. However, I'd like to be clear that the applicant will speak to this, but it is not the applicant's intention to essentially bulldoze the home and construct a whole new home. He likes to reuse materials and try to keep as much of the existing structure as possible as part of the design. This is a site photograph and aerial photograph as well. The important distinction from this project, from our typical projects, is that this is behind a gated community, and this particular community has a design review board, and we'll get into that correspondence as we work through the presentation. As proposed, as I mentioned, it is going to be a project that is a remodel of the existing home and in addition to both the first and second floors. There is also the proposal of a new second unit in the staff report that's called out as a guest house. However, there's been some concern about how that will, if it, there's any conflict with the code, depending on how the homeowner decides to use that in the future. And so, to prevent that, staff recommends that the term be used to describe it as a second unit, and we can amend if the commission approves it this evening, we can amend the staff, the resolution to use that particular wording when describing this accessory structure. There's also the proposal of a new wastewater treatment system, new decks, and also the installation of new hardscaping. And then, as I mentioned, two discretionary requests. One is going to be for height in excess of eighteen feet, up to twenty-eight feet, and then there'll also be a minor modification, as I mentioned, for the reduction of the required front yard setback. However, the applicant intends to maintain the existing front yard setback and not push the development any closer to the street. These are floor plans showing the proposed development. The existing development is shown on there as well. It's the dashed line. It's a bit hard to see, but for example, the house will be moving closer to Fernhill with that third parking space you see in the garage. Currently, the, the end of the home there would be located between those two cars. Currently, the second floor of the home is the area that you see where the dash lines of perhaps a bathroom there and a bathtub, and the staircase located on the right-hand side of the screen, that's the existing second floor. And as you can see now, the second floor will be more spread out. There'll be portions of the second floor on both sides of the home. These are elevations, as well as a floor plan showing the second unit. The second unit is essentially a single floor with a small loft that opens up onto the main open living space there that you see, the larger of the rectangles. This is a site plan showing the proposed development. As you can see, the septic system is proposed to be close to the street, which is relatively in the same location as the existing septic. which is relatively in the same location as the existing septic system. The footprint of the home, for the most part, as I mentioned, remains, except there are the pop-outs to the side there, closer to Fernhill, as I mentioned, where you saw the extra space on the garage. And then also some pop-outs, uh, that will be in the rear of the property and the side. These are renderings of the proposed design. As I mentioned right now, the primarily the singles, uh, the, the home is mostly single-story with the second floor per- portion that is opposite of the garage doors. So the area you see above the garage, that's primarily the new development. These are renderings of the proposed second unit. And there was some question about slopes. The applicant is present and can speak to that in more detail. The process they went through, the applicant is aware that in the Point Dume neighborhood, all development has to avoid slopes that are steeper than four to one. The area that you see that's dark on that slope study, that area there is steeper than four to one and the other areas have an average slope that is less than four to one. And as I mentioned, the applicant can detail that more. But when that's done by the engineer, he's using 10-foot contours and he's looking at an average with those 10-foot contours. And depending upon where you start and stop, it could affect, uh, what do you get as a slope? Essentially, say if you were to use one-foot contours or five-foot contours, uh, that tends to pick up higher detail. The standard that the city has accepted has been 10-foot contours. Staff also received correspondence from the HOA. There were two pieces of correspondence to which the applicant has submitted a, a, a piece of correspondence to demonstrate that there was approval by the Architectural Review Board. However, that approval of the Architectural Review Board is not something that the city debates. However, it is something that staff did ask the applicant early on. Because of previous history working in this neighborhood, they do have a strong design review board. And we had requested that the applicant demonstrate us, to us, that there was some sort of approval so that they, we could see that he had worked with the neighborhood to come up with something that fits the look and character of the neighborhood. The applicant can better explain the proposed use of the second unit. That tends to be, uh, seems to be the point of contention because of the concern that if that's, unit is there, it would violate a private agreement between homeowners. And once again, the applicant can address that. Uh, staff recommends adopting the resolution to approve the coastal development permit with an amendment to change the reference of guest house to second unit so that there will be no conflict in the future. Thank you.
Hi.
Several times recently, but, uh, apart from looking at it, uh, in, from the context of fire damage recently, um, I have, uh, nothing that's not in the staff report.
Uh, I'll just say, I, I did go to the site and meet with the applicant and, um, I guess it was just confirmed in what I see in the report. I also spoke on the phone with, uh, Dr. Putterman, the neighbor. And, uh, again, I, I think I don't, didn't learn anything particularly new.
Mr. Mazza?
I visited the site today with the architect and Commissioner Euring, Chairman Euring. I am aware of the neighborhood. What I did learn is, I did see what I appeared to be more than four to one slope, where the guest house story poles were. And then, uh, I did see some old construction in the, in the four to one slope area, uh, which looked like there, it says on one of the plans, it's a shed, but I was told later it was a skateboard ramp and then there's various stairways, et cetera, down in the no-build zone. And I talked, I, uh, discussed with Richard Mallica, the calculation of the four to one slope and I needed a dimension to figure out whether or not it was a four to one slope, which Richard gave me. And I did calculate out, uh, whether or not it was a four to one slope.
Commissioner Marks?
What did you calculate?
I calculated the drop in the land versus the width of the building and it is, uh, beyond four to one.
Uh, in which area?
The guest house, or whatever you wanna call it. It dropped, just to get the numbers, it dropped 13 feet. And, uh, four to one, that means your, your building has to be at least 26 feet wide. It's 20 feet wide.
Okay, so your reading of the, of the material submitted showed that drop in the area where the guest house is located?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Marks?
Uh, no disclosures.
Uh, John mentioned, I, uh, visited the site with him this morning, met with the architect. And again, the big question was the four to one slope. I'm not good enough to look at it and tell you what it was, but it looked pretty steep. Open the public hearing. You've got a, Kevin, you gotta fill out a speaker slip. Did you do that? I did not get one. You can come up and speak. And we'll, after, after you're done, we'll get one filled out for you. And he's got, what, 15 minutes, right? So you've got 15 minutes and you can save some time for rebuttal if you'd like to do that.
Okay.
So, I mean, if you know how much time you wanna save, you can let Kathleen know and she will set you up. Otherwise, you can stop when you're done and we'll save whatever you got left.
Great, thank you. And thanks for hearing, uh, thanks for hearing our project tonight. Do I go? Let's see, how do I do this? Here we go. Okay, quick about our company, and I think it's important here because there's a lot of discussion about, um, neighborhood standards. We're a design and construction company and we kind of do both so that we can control a project from start to finish, because we don't wanna design something that a contractor comes in and just rips down and rebuilds. We have a very, very strong philosophy not to put something back that was there before. We want to keep a minimal impact on the environment, on the earth. We wanna make things go faster and easier. And that's exactly what we are planning on doing here. So, pretty much every bit of this building will be used, um, again. As a matter of fact, in a lot of cases, we will take off things like the exterior siding, the floors, all kinds of items that are in the, the house as is, and we'll reuse them and repurpose them in other areas on the same project. We do that because we believe in the kind of history and integrity of the building and of the neighborhood. I know that Ron Goldman did this entire area and he's a significant architect and a lot of his houses are great. Unfortunately, this house is a little funky. It doesn't have, didn't mean to do that. It doesn't have, um, the space that our clients need and it has a lot of problems with it. It's kind of leaking and it's falling apart. So, we decided to look into the, the history and, and kind of how Malibu started and, and its ruralness and, um, its, its roots back to what it was. It was farmland, it was ranches, it was ranch houses and barns and all of that. And we wanted to take that kind of an architecture and, um, kind of turn it into a pro- progressive version of that. And, and in, in our view, there's nothing better, uh, about keeping the integrity of what Malibu is about than doing that. It relates back to, a lot of these homes are in, in Point Dume, a lot of them are all, all around Malibu. And a lot of them do relate back to barns and farmhouses, um, in a, in a new and progressive way. So, these are all current houses that are, that are out and about in Malibu. And a lot of them have that same kind of a, a look and feel and style. Some of them, yes, are way too big, uh, ours isn't. But, um, but it, it's, it's showing that the context of what we're doing is relatable to, to where we are. If you go specifically, uh, this is some of the commercial projects, of course, that you all know in Malibu, which also relate back to barns and farmhouses and ranch houses. If you look on the street, uh, and these are the six properties on the street, you can see, uh, upper left, that is a, uh, uh, kind of a stone, uh, craftsman house that doesn't relate at all to any, uh, Ron Goldman house. The house next to that on the top middle is the next-door neighbor's house to our project. That, that portion of the house exceeds, it looks like from the street that it exceeds 28 feet and it's right on the neighbor's property overlooking their, um, their driveway. To the right of that, are the, is, is a home that was done in the eighties and just recently remodeled. And it's a postmodern house that has no relationship to any Ron Goldman's, uh, uh, house. Bottom left is a Ron Goldman house that, uh, kind of relates back to ranch houses or farmhouses in Malibu. The one bottom middle, again, is another view of the next-door neighbor's house and then the bottom right is ours. So, there is no consistency with, with regard to neighborhood standards in the Sea Ranch area. They're very diverse. I think it's probably more important to choose, um, neighborhood standard from Point Dume and surrounding Malibu. We, um, this is just basically on our company and our, our kind of philosophy, but we, we have, a- and I'll talk about it a little because I know it's gonna come up, but we have gone through an extensive design review with the neighbors, with the Architecture Review Board. It took between three and six months. There were unreasonable and erratic requests, um, clearly based on, on, um, personal issues of neighbors. And, um, my clients, who are super nice, too nice, they bent over backwards to satisfy the neighborhood and the neighbors. And, uh, we made significant changes along the way during this three-to-six-month process. At the end of the process, the plans were approved by the Architecture Review Board. They were signed. Every single sheet in the section was, uh, was approved and initialled. A little while after that, um, my clients decided that they wanted a guest house or an auxiliary structure, possibly for a family member if they needed or maybe a caretaker, whatever. So we decided to add that to the plans and went back. Well, that just, uh, triggered all kinds of havoc, especially from the next-door neighbor, uh, about this guest house. And, uh, they decided to kind of hold the approval of the guest house ransom to have our clients sign a, uh, a deed restriction saying that they could never rent it, which it doesn't say in the CCNRs. At this point, there's an impasse. There's a, there's, hasn't been a, a clear, uh, understanding of how this needs to play out with regard to the guest house. As far as the four to one slope goes, uh, we hired a, a company to do the analysis. We told them we wanted to build the guest house on something less than a four to one slope. They did their analysis and we put the guest house where they told us to. We even had to move it. So if it's not on a four to one slope, it's a professional mistake by that company. I'm not sure it is and I'm not sure it's not, but of course, we would check into that. Yeah, that's all I have.
Okay, you got eight minutes.
Yeah.
Do you wanna? We've got some additional speaker slips. There's a Mr. Seth Putterman. And following him will be Ravita. Okay. Help from the audience is always appreciated.
Hello, uh, I'm Seth Putterman. I live at 28778 Sea Ranch Way with my wife and sons for 20 years. I bought the house in the 1970s from the architect, Ron Goldman, who developed, uh, the street. I am the head of the Sea Ranch Way Architectural Committee, which is stipulated in our street's CCNRs, is to oversee renovation and new construction on our street. I do not take this job on the Architectural Committee lightly, even though I also run a physics lab at UCLA. The goal of the Architectural Committee is to basically reach a compromise between the street as a whole and the homeowners in question, weighing most heavily the neighbors most impacted by the construction. The CCNRs give the Architectural Committee wide berth in overseeing all aspects of lot development, including strict guidelines in some aspects and only vague instructions in others. The negotiations with the Howgies were somewhat difficult when they began years ago, as his architect did not even acknowledge the existence of the Architectural Committee, let alone its authority. After months of somewhat contentious negotiations, a compromise deal was reached and plans were signed off on. Last fall, the Howgie submitted revisions to the plan, resetting the clock for the Architectural Committee approval. In particular, they sought to include a guest house on the property, which is specifically forbidden in the CCNRs, which prohibit dwellings of less than 2,000 square feet on our street. The committee worked with the Howgies to find a compromise, but they insisted that they had a right to build a guest house despite the CCNR violation and despite the Architectural Committee's final disapproval of the revised plans. Unfortunately, by moving ahead with their disapproved plans, the Howgies have now put all of Sea Ranch Way in an awkward position. By permitting their construction, we would be violating and weakening the CCNRs, which give our street its unique peaceful character and give us guidelines to function together as a private street. Since the Howgies have chosen this route, we are forced to reassess their entire construction plans from the lens of Malibu neighbors, rather than as a street protected from overdevelopment by architectural guidelines. From this perspective, the Architectural Committee members, who are the Howgie's three closest name, neighbors on the street, unanimously came to the conclusion that the Howgie's proposed construction violates the character of the existing homes on the street. As in a letter early ascent, I mentioned, the facade is very imposing and high on a lot, which is already situated closer to the street and higher off the street than any other. We ask the Planning Commission to take these objections to their plan into account.
Seth, thank you very, very much. Next speaker is Ravita. Ripta?
Ripta, R-I-T-P.
I, I apologize.
That's okay, a lot of my neighbors don't know it. That's okay.
Ripta, what's your last name?
Sorry.
Can you just give us your last name also?
Uh, my last name is Lofted, L-O-F-S-T-E-D-T.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Okay, uh, I'm a terrible public speaker and I'm also conflict diverse, so this is not my strong point here. So you have my name. I am Seth Putterman's wife. I've lived on Sea Ranch Way for 20 years. From the very beginning, I liked our quiet cul-de-sac. Part of what makes it great is the CCNRs, which govern the street. This document is, is an overarching guideline, not just for development, but also use of the street. In particular, having seen the Architectural Committee in action twice while I've lived here, I admire how the committee of three asks for feedback from the entire street and seeks unanimity when it's achievable. When the Rooks developed the last empty lot on the street several years ago, the Howgies were vocal in their criticisms and comments on the proposed house, as it was directly across the street from theirs. Their comments, along with many others, were evaluated and forwarded to the Rooks, who amended their facade, the window placement, the outdoor lighting and more. Although Dan Rook admits that the process was at times painful, in hindsight, he understands and appreciates the changes that were asked for. Note that Dan Rook replaced an ill-member on the Architectural Committee and was part of the unanimous decision to turn down the Howgie's final plans and oppose the height of the proposed house in the committee chair's letter to the Planning Commission. Another great thing about the CCNRs on the street is that they do not establish a precedent for the street. It's specifically written that decisions made about one construction project aren't necessarily used as precedents for others. This gives the Architectural Committee more leeway in making compromises with the homeowner, specifically regarding one site. This is a way of keeping the peace on the street, since the Architectural Committee members are, of course, neighbors of the builder. I mean, the homeowner. I'm telling you all this to explain why the Howgie's decision to proceed with getting approval for plans which are not approved of by the Architectural Committee poses such a problem for the street. The entire Architectural Committee and the majority of homeowners on the street agree that the CCNRs prohibit building a guest house, which the Howgies nevertheless seek to do. The CCNRs further state that the Howgies must have approval from the Architectural Committee before submitting plans to the city, as you are currently reviewing plans that have been disapproved of. We neighbors can only assume that the Howgies are disregarding the authority of the CCNRs entirely. For this reason, we as a street have to proceed as though the CCNRs are not there until a lawsuit or much more hopefully, a compromise settles the issue. Since for the purposes of this meeting, the Howgies have decided that the CCNRs are not valid, we oppose this design as regular Malibu neighbors would. We don't wish this house to establish a mansionization precedent on our street. Its proposed height towers over the other houses and is out of character with the rest of Sea Ranch Way. of Sea Ranch Way.
Thank you very much. You did good. Kevin, you've got eight minutes left? And just remember to fill out a speaker slip, if you would, when you're done.
Yes, sir.
You got it? Okay.
Okay. Couple of things that I'll try and remember based on what the Puttermans just said. One is the house towering over the neighboring houses. As a matter of fact, and as evidenced by one of those photos that I showed, the Putterman's house is actually higher than this house and closer to the property line. It has a very, very steep angled roof line that is right on top of the Monus's property line, and has a wall of windows, creating a very un-private area for the Monus's. So, you know, that makes no sense. Our project is under the 28-foot limit. We already have a two-story portion of the house on the side where the Putterman's house is. The other two-story area that we're adding is closer to Fern Hill, and our setback from Fern Hill is huge. So, it's really nowhere near anybody. We've also manipulated the massing of the building so that it's not one solid block of 28-foot-high building. It's a series of one- and two-story areas. It's a series of pitched roofs and flat roofs. And it's undulated so that the fronts of these areas are staggered back from the property line, creating open space. All done for a reason, so that it's not imposing and that the scale is broken down for the neighborhood. And in comparison to the house across the street that Riffa was talking about, it's very similar in that size and scale, and also to the Hilton's house down at the end of the block. With regard to the guesthouse, the guesthouse is pretty much hidden from everybody. Nobody can even see where the guesthouse is from their property. It's kind of around the corner. The Howgie's lot is huge, and this guesthouse is located kind of down the hill towards Fern Hill. There's actually an existing parking space there where a person, if they were using the guesthouse, could park, and the homeowners on the Sea Ranch Street wouldn't even know that anybody was there. As far as contentious during the design process, I wouldn't call it contentious. I would actually call it unreasonable. The Howgies were asked to do things by the Puttermans, like not have any windows on the front of the house, because when they drove down the street, they didn't want to see light, is the way it was presented to us. Well, that's a pretty unrealistic thing. Most people want windows in their house to let in light and ventilation. But the Howgies instructed me to, if I could, to redesign the house to absolutely minimize the fenestration on the front of the house and locate the fenestration on the sides and the rear. And we did it. We did everything they asked for, and just because we decided to revise the permit by adding a guesthouse, it doesn't denounce the fact that they already proved the architecture, size, and scale and scope of the project for the existing house, which did not change one bit. Thank you.
Kevin, thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak on the topic? Yes, sir.
I don't know how to get to it. Thank you. My name's Chris Howgie.
Again, if you would, after you fill out a speaker slip, please, and give it to the lady.
Be happy to.
Okay. Thank you very much. Go right ahead.
Absolutely. This project has been contentious, and it has stalled because of one reason. They want me to sign a deed restriction for the guesthouse, that I would never lease the guesthouse. It's got nothing to do with the design of the property. That's the reason for their arguing that they don't want to allow the property now, or the redesign. That's, there's a fight over the guesthouse, period. That's it. Everything else was approved prior to that. So, I just want to clear the record that that's the case. One of the three people on the Architecture Review Board on January 21st, for the record, I did not agree with the deed restriction at the time it was opposed on me, and do not agree with the request to have Chris agree to it. That's for his guesthouse across the street. It was approved in 2012. So, that's an Architecture Committee member stating that fact on January 21st. That's it.
Thank you very much. Can I ask you a question? Yes. I'm not sure I heard you correctly. There is a guesthouse on the property across the street?
Right across the street. It's called a poolhouse, but it's an additional structure that was approved in 2012.
Anybody else like to speak on the subject? If not, we will close the public hearing, bring it back up to the table, and Trevor, just a very quick question. What do, do we take the CCNRs in any consideration in any way whatsoever?
No, the CCNRs are not binding on the city. The application here is you're applying the provisions of the LIP and the municipal code to the project here. So, if they have a CCNR issue, they can go and sue, but they might have some difficulty under state law if they're trying to prohibit a second unit, so.
Okay. Thank you. Here at the table.
Question?
Questions?
Go ahead.
This is for Richard. The habitable square footage proposed is what? I see a chart that has a number on it, and it's just not clear to me how that relates to the TDSF on this one. The TDSF of 6,882 proposed. There's a chart of nearby residences, Attachment 7, habitable area. It's listed as 5,558. That's the proposed, correct? As compared to, it looks like roughly an average of about 4,000 square feet for the other five houses on the street, with some variation granted.
I'm sorry, I want to get back. Is your question? Because I heard a few different numbers. Are you asking why?
Well, you have it listed as 5,558. That's the proposed on this table, or that's what it is already?
No, that is the proposed, and that number has subtracted out the proposed garage, because the rest of the numbers that we provided to you come from the county assessor's office, which doesn't include the garage or any mechanical rooms or non-habitable areas.
Okay.
But then to clarify, the 5,558 is the primary. Do you include the, however you want to call it, EDU, whatever that would be? I think it's 778 square feet, which would bring it to 6328.
Yes, you are correct, Commissioner Marks, because we have... Yes, that's correct. That's just the single-family home, not the second unit or the garage.
And in terms of how you did your habitable area for the comparables, would you have included a second unit, were there one there?
Good question.
I can't answer that question because I don't have that information. The assessor's information we had on this was just the one number. In some cases, yes, those properties come up as two dwelling units, but without the actual individual assessor's record to see how he calculated the habitable square footage, I couldn't tell you how they came up with that number.
Great, thank you.
Richard, I'm always dumbfounded on why, in our staff reports, we call houses like this remodels, when in fact, they're, under the code, they're a brand-new house, correct?
Yes, as I mentioned, it is in the staff report, referred to as replacement structure, but the, and as we mentioned earlier before the presentation, because the applicant's around 51, 52 percent, it's the applicant's intention that he's not out there trying to, as he mentioned, demolish the whole house and build a new home. He really is trying to work with the old structure, and for the purposes of the code, yes, it exceeds the definition of a remodel, but of what the construction would be termed, it would be a remodel of a home, rather than the replacement of a whole home.
Well, I just want to make a comment that it's helpful to the Planning Commission to know what rules we're following, and remodel is different than a new CDP, so I don't know why we use that term, but that's not a big deal. Now, there's, they're rebuilding the decks. And if you look at the slope analysis, are they rebuilding the swimming pool?
No, the pool remains.
Okay, but the decks around it? We don't know, right? Those are being replaced?
The applicant can clarify for us, but yes. From what I could tell on the plans, it was replacement. There was some proposed additional decks, but it was all within the graded pad that was created for the home.
Okay, so, but the four-to-one slope analysis shows part of the decks, not a huge part, but part of the decks being in four-to-one. Was that ever considered as, since they're being rebuilt, new home, not allowed?
We can clarify that for you, but I believe that the footings for those are on the areas that are less than four-to-one, and they extend over, like a cantilever design.
Okay. Now, the construction done in the four-to-one slope area, since this is considered a new home, is that going to be removed?
We can amend the resolution to include a condition for its removal if the commission so desires.
That's normally what happens on a new house, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Now, the most important thing to me, it's a civil case, right, Trevor, as far as the CCNRs? We don't even need to deal with that.
That's correct.
Okay. The guesthouse. First, what do you mean by average slope? Are you saying that everything there in that funny color green is averaged together?
What I had asked them for because of the concern with four-to-one slopes many months ago, before we deemed the project complete, was to go back to their engineer and identify the areas where the slopes are steeper than four-to-one, using the city's standard criteria, which is using 10-foot contours, and you're creating an average over the area. And that's what they did.
So, when I look at the guesthouse, it's in an area where essentially every single topo line is the same distance apart, within millimeters. And this particular house drops 13 feet, or 12 feet, giving him a break. And if you multiply that by four, that means that the structure has to be at least 24 to 26 feet in width. And you confirmed to me today that it's 20 feet. So, by definition, simple math, it's being built on a greater-than-four-to-one slope. So, is there any variance proposed, and is there a reason why we could approve a house built on more than four-to-one slope on Point Doom?
The applicant isn't proposing a variance. And yes, while we did speak about the slope, the catch here is that I was not able to speak with the project engineer. I spoke with the applicant, and I don't know where the engineer started his documentation, figuring out where the slope began, because depending upon your start point, it will affect the outcome of that slope analysis.
Well, why would that be? Do you have L1 on your slides? Because when I look at it, all of the topo lines in that particular area are the same. It wouldn't matter where you started. And this is so far over four-to-one, you'd have to have a variance, I mean, a variance in topo lines, showing this as being flatter than next to the land next to it. And it's not. It's in the steepest portion, according to topo lines. So, mathematically, it cannot be four-to-one.
When I reviewed the slope analysis today, the full-size drawing, there is great difference in the difference between those ISO bars, between the area that is dark versus the area that is not dark. If the commission wishes, the applicant can perhaps provide additional information from their civil engineer or surveyor who created it. But when you look at the full-size drawing, there is a difference in the width of those ISO bars.
I have no reason to believe that there isn't a difference. The question is whether or not it's four-to-one. The ISO bars could be 10-to-1, as far as I know, in the dark area, because you barely can read them. But in that particular area, you measure 12 and a half to 13 feet. By counting.
Commissioner Marks, do you have a suggestion of how we can resolve this?
Well, we could either, we could either say we approve the project. We can approve the project without the guesthouse. I don't see how we can approve, or whatever you want to call it, ancillary dwelling unit, that's not legal yet, whatever that number thing is, but, and then they can come back in later, or we can continue it. But the evidence presented to us on L1 shows, building on a four-to-one slope analysis. Now, usually when we get a four-to-one slope analysis, it's not, in fact, I've never seen one that says over four, under four. We get the different kinds, and they're color-coded. This one is, everything's over four-to-one or less than four-to-one. Well, in that particular area, you can calculate it. It's easy to calculate. You have the numbers. There's no question about it in my mind.
I would hate to, in my own personal opinion, I would hate to not approve the second unit without some expert, I mean, I agree your math is good, okay? But there are people who do this for a living, and I think I'd like to hear from them before we...
So, do you want to continue the item?
What's the commission's pleasure?
Now, let me ask an alternate...
Jeff, you can have a different way to do it.
Can we, can we approve the house and continue this item on the guesthouse? Or do we have to start all over again?
No, it's one CDP, so you either continue the item, or you could approve it and...
Okay. Well, then I'm going to make a motion to continue the item until we receive information that the guesthouse is not constructed on a four-to-one slope.
I do want to have a little more conversation on this as well.
Yeah, yeah. Go ahead.
Okay, so, okay, so I'll take that. So, I just want to clarify, when we're talking about the SPR review, and this is directed to Richard first, you know, we stated that there's like a part in the presentation which says located in the gated community, but for SPR, can you just review the requirement we're supposed to, what, all properties within 500 feet, removing the top and bottom 10 percent, if I remember correctly, for SPR?
No, you're looking at a neighborhood standards application?
Okay.
SPR doesn't, we notice properties within 500 feet, but we don't come up with an average for that. The neighborhood standards application, which is very specific, that's when you're trying to do something that perhaps, if you're a new home building in a community full of homes that are old county homes, that just don't meet our code, and if we were to implement our code, it would be something unfair, for example, to that homeowner, because everybody else on the street has, say, a 30-foot-high home. That would be a case where you would do a neighborhood standards application. You'd obtain a survey for each of the properties in that neighborhood. You would basically throw out the outliers and come up with an average. That is a very different set of findings than the findings for a...
It's an alternative to a variance.
Yes.
Commissioner Marks is talking about neighborhood character, I believe.
Yeah, because I'm looking down at finding two, just for the neighborhood character with the setback from the street and the height of the project as well. So, I mean, I'm just trying to make sure when we're talking about the community be considered in this discussion, is it just on Seeridge Drive, or is the property's within 500 feet?
That's a matter of discretion for the commission, and I think it really can vary depending on the setting of the project. You know, you might have a short street like this with just a handful of homes, whereas in another part of the town, or even another part of Point Doom even, you might want to look at a broader area than just what isn't right in the immediate vicinity. So, I feel like that's a case-by-case thing, and there's no set calculation and no set, you know, radius or anything that's associated with a neighborhood character finding.
And as I remember, the definition of neighborhood says an area not connected by, separated by physical barriers. For example, this has two gullies around it and the same entrance. So, in this case, it would be just Sea Ranch Drive.
But again, that is a definition that's specific to the neighborhood standards and the calculation that's conducted for that.
It's a general definition in the LIP, so it's...
It's only in that particular section related to neighborhood standards. It's good guidance, I think, because it, they form natural kind of barriers for a neighborhood.
I think the city council... I think the city council's item coming up on this...
Yes, on the twenty-fifth.
Next meeting.
All right, can I, I have a couple of quick questions, hopefully.
Let me get Commissioner Jennings.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Come back now, go ahead, Jeff.
Well, I was going to suggest that, that, um, that the, the evidence actually in front of us shows that the guest house is, is not built on a slope greater than four to one, because it's the engineer's data that's presented to us. That's the evidence that we have, you know, we can sit and calculate on our own, or we can draw lines and do whatever we want, but that's really not our function. It's not our function to, 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 our function is to accept and consider evidence rather than, than doing it ourselves. In this particular case, it seems to me that, that, um, the, um, it, it's unusual, but in this case, it seems to me that if you take a small area as, as the definition of, of the neighborhood, the neighborhoods told us it's within the neighborhood character, because they signed off on the original plan. What they don't like is the, is the guest house, which is not, you know, the, the main house itself is, is, they've said that was okay. So, uh, I would be in favor of supporting the project.
And Jeff, I don't disagree, and that's, you know, one of the reasons I think we want to get an expert to give us an opinion. However, I want it looked at, okay? And I'm not, I'm not an expert, I am not, okay? But it sure looks steep to me, all right? And it just seems to me that to make sure we do it right...
Can I comment on that?
Go ahead.
Uh, the expert did give us the evidence. He presented this plan. He drew topo lines. They're easily counted, and they're numbered. So the, it's, it's right here, okay?
I think the originals is probably done on a scale of a quarter inch to a, to a foot, or eighth of an inch.
No, these are labeled ninety-foot elevation, eighty-foot elevation.
I, I know, I'm saying that...
You don't have to do is count the lines in between.
I'm just saying if you look at a larger sheet, it might look different than, than that.
Well, this is way off.
Jump in here quickly, um, it sounds like maybe we're moving towards a continuance, but i- if that's the case, there's other info that I'd like to know. There's a sheet that we don't have reproduced in this packet that, uh, that was somehow on the online version that showed a, something called a geologic contact. Richard, maybe you could enlighten us on that. There were a couple of lines under the house represented on the sheet with dotted lines that were referred to as geologic contacts. And I wondered if those, or if those represented some kind of discontinuity or, uh, the difference between different geological formations, or what, what those really meant.
I believe you said the sheet wasn't included in the packet, but...
It's not in, it's not in the folder. It was, I found it when I, when I initially looked at the application, I went to the online version, and, and unfortunately, I left my iPad at home.
Yeah, it's, it's referenced as the geologic map on the online version. And it looks like it does have some of those kind of crosshairs we'd seen in an earlier presentation, et cetera. It doesn't have a page number, but it follows up after, uh... Oh, sorry, yeah, on the PDF, it's on page seven oh five of thirteen forty.
And, and associated with that, as, as you're trying to track it down there, I don't see any opinion offered as to the geological integrity.
I think it is in the packet here. Craig, do you take, uh...
Well, whatever it is, if we can just cite what the page number is then, so he can look at it and maybe explain what that means.
Okay. I'm sure, yeah, I think it is in the reproduced packet here, if this is the same one.
Yeah, just before the biology, biology...
What you're looking at is, is part of the referral sheets, it's the environmental health approval.
Yes.
Yeah, it's showing the septic system approval.
And so what is a line of geologic contact?
I can't answer that, but it's part of what the city geologist, as well as the environmental health administrator, reviewed to determine that whether the new septic system was actually a feasible design and met all the city's standards.
Okay, so if, if, if this goes to continuance, that would be something to clarify. And then secondly, sort of similarly, um, on the environmental review sheet, the consultant has mitigation recommendations for foundation excavations. I just wondered, what are they talking about mitigating, and what are those recommendations? Is there some geological issue there with the foundation, or what, what is that?
Well, for, for any structural house design, there's going to be a set of recommendations that the structural engineer is going to provide, or the geotechnical engineer, and, and so it, it could be anything from like expansive soils to slope stability issue, or it could be any number of things like that.
It just wasn't specified, so I just wondered if there's any geo issues, given that we do have these steep slopes too. Uh, yeah.
All right, seems to me that we have figured out that the, chasing the CCs and ours are above our pay grade, so we're going to pass on that. There has been at least a suggestion, I can't remember if we had a motion to continue it. And I think, you know, at least my perspective, that's the right thing to do as opposed to denying that second unit. Let's make sure we got it right, so we're not driving anybody of anything.
I will move, we continue the item to the earliest date certain?
Can I add one quick, quick comment too? In terms of character, you can see the guest house really well from Fernwood coming from the other direction. So if we're talking about the, the neighborhoods being the six houses, the, the guest house would actually have sort of a visual impact from Fernwood, so just wanted to toss that in there.
And as I understand, I don't think it was in the staff report that there's going to be a separate entrance off of Fernhill?
The applicant can, can speak to that if you'd like additional information.
At the next hearing. Uh, it's just something that should be clarified if there is or if there isn't. Uh, so I move, we continue the item two?
The eighteenth, March eighteenth.
Is that enough time to come back with the topo? March eighteenth? That's plenty of time, right? Okay, continue to date certain, March eighteenth, two thousand eighteen.
I'll second.
Okay. Catherine, can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jennings? Chair Euring?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very much. Move on to item five B. A coastal development permit number seventeen oh thirty-nine, an application for a seawall repair at an existing triplex. Could we get a staff report? Justine? Justine New?
I'm new, new to you.
New to you, yes. Justine Kendall is one of our assistant planners. This, I guess, must be her first time presenting to the planning commission, although she's had some administrative permits that you've approved or accepted.
Welcome. Yes, nice to have you here.
Thank you, uh, good evening, commissioners and Chair Euring. Um, the project before you this evening is to allow for, uh, the following, to replace approximately thirty-five feet of severely damaged timber seawall with the same amount of reinforced concrete seawall, to also remove and replace the concrete slab extending from the top of that existing seawall, and to remove the existing concrete slurry and timber board debris at the base of the existing wall, and replace that with concrete slurry and a new footing covered by a cobble layer. The project is at two zero one, two zero Pacific Coast Highway, which is just south of the Big Rock area located, uh, next to PCH. This is a little bit hard to read, but this is the overall site plan. The box, the green box indicates the area of the wall to be replaced. Again, the, the same dimensions and area. This is a more detailed site plan, and we'll get into each of these numbers in the following slides. But it shows again, in the, in the darker gray, the area of wall to be replaced, um, and the, the overall site plan. There was some question about where the onsite wastewater treatment system is located, and it's located, uh, north of what this is showing here, underneath the parking area and on the PCH side of the house. This is a cross-section of, of the wall that shows in the, the darkest vertical, the concrete, or the timber wall that will be replaced with concrete. And then the diagonal above that is the concrete slab to be replaced with the, the slurry there at the bottom. This is a, a close-up of the footing and the slurry to be removed and replaced with the concrete slurry at the bottom, and the new footing shown in that kind of medium gray box. The darkest gray column there is the existing pile, which we'll talk about in a second. Number three is that concrete slab detail, that, that diagonal extending from the top of the seawall, which is just being removed and replaced with a concrete slab of the same dimensions. And then, uh, number four is just showing the wrap for the existing pile. There's, there's no change other than it being wrapped. Uh, these are some site photos taken a few weeks ago that show a little bit of an overlap of the entire area to be, uh, replaced. The, the farthest, on the, on the left-hand photo, that kind of farthest edge is showing the adjacent, uh, house. And then you can see the overlap extending to the right. This is showing the properties on either side. It's a little bit hard to see, um, from this resolution, but the seawall is in the shadow there, um, far behind the properties on, on either side. That concludes my presentation, and I am available for any questions.
Justine, thank you very much. Any disclosures?
I walked down on the site with Commissioner Euring, and we looked at it together from a distance, and then I went in closer and looked, uh, and took some photographs and observed it all, and, uh, learned something about the state of other pilings that are not, um, under review in this application. And I, I understand now that that's not something we need to address at this moment.
None.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Hill said, I went on the beach, younger legs, he had took him down to the house. I stayed where I was, but we looked at it from a distance. Okay, we have... There you go. Any speaker slips? Okay. It's the second time that's happened tonight. Open, and would anybody like to comment on this project? Okay. Close the public hearing, bring it back up to the table.
Questions? Okay, um, Justine, um, why is this considered a minor, what is it, not a minor repair, but a, I don't know what the word is, when it's over fifty percent of the seawall being replaced? Instead of a new structure?
It is considered a replacement of the seawall, because it's, it's over twenty percent of the seawall, which is, um, why it's before you right now.
Okay, and then, uh, is, and, and maybe I'm wrong in this, but doesn't the coastal commission say that you can repair a seawall but not replace it?
That, um, there's a standard condition for seawall repairs, which is, uh, I don't know if this is what you're thinking of, but it's been included as a condition here, saying that, um, you are accepting the condition that you can't extend the seawall any further. But there's not a condition that, especially for existing development that's relying on the seawall, you're allowed to repair or replace the seawall if there's, if it's, um, if there's no other way to protect the existing development.
Well, is it the development or the septic system?
It could be either one.
Either one, so...
And, and that's specific to existing non-conforming development. There's a section, um, I think it's ten point four...
Whatever.
Whatever, yeah, but, um, it's, it's a special allowance for existing non-conforming development that doesn't, you could not use the same thing for new construction that has to rely on its own piles or whatever to withstand wave up brush and things like that.
Okay, so when I looked at the plans, I'm the one that, I didn't disclose this, I'm the one that asked where the septic tank was, because usually seawalls are supposed to protect septic tanks. It doesn't appear this one does, that the septic tank is up above and behind and by the highway, not, not where the sea is. So, can we approve, uh, essentially a reconstruction of a seawall that doesn't protect a septic tank?
Just looking for the environmental health approval that should show where the...
Environmental health didn't review this project, but I, I spoke to the environmental health administrator today, and, and she said that, mostly that she had no issue with the project. It would, I believe your, um, earlier concern was about how the, the onsite, onsite wastewater treatment system would be serviced, and because everything is essentially staying in the same place, it would be serviced in the same way. The engineer for this project did include in their analysis that not repairing the seawall, or having no seawall, would create an impact on the onsite wastewater treatment system, and that the wave up brush would negatively impact that system and cause it to fail.
So, don't we need an environmental approval if that's, if this is to protect a, a septic system? Which the, you just said, this is to protect the septic system. Don't we need an environmental review? If it's a septic system?
I think the critical issue is that the coastal engineer is satisfied that it meets all the recommendations for, um, withstanding the wave up brush and that.
Right, my question is, and maybe I'm getting screwed up here, but my question is, this doesn't appear to protect the, the septic system, because the environmental department doesn't care. They didn't even review it. It's, it's to protect the hill. And is that a valid, under the coastal act, is that a valid reason for seawall? Because I was always under the understanding, you could only have a seawall to protect a septic system, it had to be the most landward location. But this doesn't appear to protect the septic system, it's uphill from it.
I'm not sure if it's accurate that it does not protect the septic system, because the property is very shallow.
Yes, and what the engineer, a little bit more specifically, is stating is that the wave up brush limits, while the water may not get there, the theoretical wave up brush limits are landward of the home, which is where the septic system is located. And the reason why the city's coastal engineer approved the project is because the project is protecting an existing home, where if the seawall is not repaired, not only will the septic system be compromised, but the existing development. Commissioner Mazza is entirely correct, that new development cannot rely on the septic system with the, excuse me, cannot rely on the seawall with the exception of the septic system. So the homes that you see before you, they have a, a pile design that may be either set far enough back or deep enough back to where it's not susceptible to wave action. However, this home doesn't feature a pile design foundation that's capable of that. And because of that, this house was originally designed with the seawall for protection, and therefore, um, under the coastal act, section three point six G nine, shoreline protective devices are permissible to protect existing structures. And in terms of the review by the city's environmental health administrator, as the director mentioned, the wave effects on a septic system are analyzed by the coastal engineer, not the environmental health administrator. The environmental health administrator would have looked at this project had it proposed some sort of modification to the system. Or, for example, let's say there was going to be an interior remodel, even if they weren't going to change plumbing fixture counts, bedroom loads, or anything like that, they would customarily review something like that. But since this project is strictly pertaining to just the seawall, and there is no construction proposed, and also the setbacks aren't an issue, it wa, it's not fair to say that it was never looked at by the environmental health administrator. She did a cursory review at the counter and determined that a formal review from her was not required. That's, uh, part of the pre-submital requirements of any coastal development permit that's submitted in the city.
Okay, was, wasn't a wave up or steady done?
I believe so, and also, to add for clarity, the leach fields for the septic system are in between that parking area. They're, they're underneath the house, behind the wall.
And, in response...
So they're underneath the slab? I'm wondering what the slab is for on top of the, behind the wall. If you're not going to have a wave go over that, why do you put a slab on top of it? And you're putting it on, now I find out you're putting it on top of the leach field. And I was under the understanding you didn't have impermeable surfaces above leach fields.
Getting back to Commissioner Mazza's first question, yes, a wave up brush report was completed, and it was reviewed. It was completed by Vice Structural Engineers and Associates. And it's what our city coastal engineer had based his review on.
Okay. While I add that thing about the slab on top of the leach field, what's the purpose of the slurry and rocks in front of the leach, in front of the sea wall? You're removing old stuff, I know that, but we haven't seen... Sea walls come in with a bunch of slurry and junk put in front of them before, that I remember. Is there a reason for that?
We would have to have the applicant's coastal engineer to describe that. Because in his report, his recommendation, given the existing site conditions, would be to utilize a design where you have the cobblestones and slurry mix in front of the wall and the repair. The coastal engineer would be, the one, project engineer would be the best to answer that. It may have to do with the fact that they need protection, that the base of the sea wall, for example, if you were constructing a new sea wall, may be much deeper, but in this case, that's not practical, given the location of where the wall is under the home. They may not be able to excavate that far down to get the protection they need, so it's not undermined. And so to achieve that, putting something in front of it like that type of skirting would achieve that effect. But once again, we would need the coastal engineer here to describe further his design.
Yeah, I don't want to nitpick that, but the Coastal Act says you can have a sea wall the most seaward, landward you can. But I don't think it ever mentions you can dump concrete and rocks on the beach. Is that something that we can do?
It's not necessarily dumping rocks on the beach. It's basically a rock revetment in a way. I mean, it's not a revetment with huge boulders, but that's what it's functioning as. And we have approved rock revetments in some situations. But the Coastal Commission typically wants us to approve sea walls because of its impact on coastal resources. Because when you do a rock revetment, it usually is built up at an angle and extends seaward. However, in this situation, the city's coastal engineer, I believe, felt that this was appropriate because the work is taking place under the home and would not affect coastal access. And it was also reviewed by the state lands commission, who didn't feel, they didn't issue a letter indicating that any of the proposed work is taking place within the required setback from the mean high tide or on state lands.
Well, I'm not going to make a big deal about it, but we approve rock revetments instead of sea walls. Have we ever had a rock revetment and a sea wall?
I think this is just part of the, it's part of the overall engineering design based on these site-specific conditions, that they need extra, apparently need extra stabilization.
Last question for Richard, and, well, I need to get an answer on the slab. But there's conditions on page two of the geoc coastal engineer that require a monitoring plan, and two other conditions that they want in the approvals. Are those conditions in our resolution?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, so they have a monitoring plan.
That's a standard condition that the city coastal engineer is requiring on all these types of projects.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it ever made it to the, to the resolution. Okay.
Okay, anybody else up here have any questions?
I'll just comment that I had a lot of questions. I submitted them, I thought, in a sort of timely manner, and I didn't get a reply until I had paperwork, until I walked in here and was able to glance through it and learn that my concerns were understood and not warranted.
Okay, but I do need an answer.
I'd like to move the staff recommendation.
Okay.
I'll second it, but I would send it to an answer.
The most recent, we pulled the most recent, out of our on-base system, the most recent septic plot plan. It's kind of crude, but on this plot plan, I don't see, once I'm missing it, a leach field. What I see is a 1,500-gallon tank that's on the landward side of the home, between the, the home there, between the parking area. And it's identifying 1,500-gallon tank that's connected to a seepage pit that's located in that. I believe it's a dirt parking area. I don't think it was paved. But that's what I'm seeing. I'm not seeing a leach field on this document.
So we're okay putting a cement over it? It's not, the cement slab does not go over the pit?
Yes, based off of this document here from our environmental health records, placing the concrete there would not be over the septic system.
Thank you.
Okay, we got a motion and a second? Roll call?
Motion to approve.
Kathleen?
Vice Chair Jennings. Commissioner Mazza.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Marks.
Yes.
Chair Euring.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Got one, we're up to our last item, and I appreciate you people, you know, waiting patiently back there. Can we take a 10-minute break and then come back? All right.
Back at 9:15?
9:15, and we cannot talk to you, and you cannot talk to us during this break, so thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you will grab a seat.
We lost Jeff.
And Jeff is right over there, we just got to wait for him. Okay, we're all ready to go. This is item 6A, Soho's Little Beach House Malibu Permit Conformist Review. It's a one-year review. It's taken a little longer than a year. So, we got speaker slips, okay? Ken? Oh, staff report, I'm sorry.
Good evening Chair Uring. Yes, what you have in front of you this evening is a compliance review. I visited the property on the 5th of this month. And Attachment 1, as you're probably familiar with, is a list of conditions from the three. That's a conditional use permit that was originally issued for the site, and then two subsequent amendments to that conditional use permit. So what I did is I compiled all of the conditions, met with the property manager as well as their representatives, who was here this evening, Ken Erlich, and went over with them and walked the site to take a look at what they had and whether or not they were out of compliance with the conditions. What I found based on my inspection was that we have two conditions that they were out of compliance with. And one of them is they've had events with live music amplified sound, which is not permitted on the site. And the other observation that was made, and the applicant submitted materials to this effect, so we knew that it was happening once we spoke to them, was that they have relocated their employee parking. It's not that the applicant has taken away any of the onsite parking. They are providing the required spaces. The layout of the parking lot matches the layout of the parking lot that was approved in the original Costa Development permit. What was explained to me was that the parking they have now, occasionally there's a peak hour where they need additional spaces. And so what they've done to address that is they've asked their employees to park at the enclave. And that frees up roughly about 28 parking spaces. My understanding is that it's essentially the manager and the head chef that park onsite, but the rest of the staff parks offsite. And the issue there is that a special condition was placed on the project under one of the subsequent amendments. And that condition stated that any parking for the site be that's used for patrons or employees take place onsite. So even though they have the required parking, this condition's more restrictive. Because I'm certain that we can say that many places in Malibu provide the required parking, but they still have folks that are parking somewhere else and walking in. Perhaps someone is shopping next door and they wish to shop at the shop without moving their car and they, you know, visit the one store and then walk to the next store. These folks have a specific condition that would prohibit that. And they would be in violation, and they are in violation of that. On Friday, this past Friday, the applicant did submit an application to amend their conditional use permit. And in that, they're proposing to document their parking and also they've requested a modification of that condition. And they're also going to ask for some modifications to the operation, which include live entertainment because that goes along with the intent and operation and culture of the Soho House as it is a, kind of like a arts club. That information's not before you tonight. The reason why I mentioned it is that I wanted to let you know that they were making an, they're trying to make an attempt to address where staff observed that they were not in compliance. I'm available for any questions as well as the applicant. Thank you.
Richard, thank you very much. Can we have some disclosures first, please? None?
I visited the site with Steve and we've got the lay of the land and got a little tour. And so we sort of understand the issues pertaining to acoustics and that sort of thing in a visceral way.
John?
Yeah, I want, and visited the site. Just, I wanted to, I had never been there, wanted to get sort of a physical layout and understanding of what was going on. So, didn't learn anything that wasn't in the staff report.
And no additional disclosures?
Richard, somewhere in here is last, last report we had from you. I think it was like a year and a half ago. And it says staff is working with Soho House to have parking at the enclave. And that was like a year and a half ago. What's different now?
Essentially, what you have before you, the difference being is that we have the actual site investigation and staff completed a review. Prior to that report, we were made aware of the enclave parking, but we had not conducted a site inspection for compliance with all of the conditions. And at that time too, as we mentioned, staff was working with them to try to eliminate the noise problem. However, you can see there's a bit of a history there and it ended up becoming a code enforcement case.
I did find it, it's July 27, 2017. So that's a little over a year and a half. What transcribed, I mean their attorney wrote Trevor a letter saying, "I'm working on this, we're working with you and we're gonna have our parking at the enclave, blah, blah, blah." Why did we wait a year and a half? Or a year and a quarter? Is there, did anything happen in that period of time that's different?
Sorry, I thought the planning director was gonna speak. No, we're essentially at the same place. Staff had hoped to have this actually about four to five months ago in front of the planning commission. However, there was the fire. So, because we were trying to have this in front of you in November, the staff was working with the applicant. I want to say we probably started conversations within them in the September timeframe because of the code enforcement to have them submit a conditional use permit amendment. And what I believe we said at the last meeting was that we were trying to bring forward the application for an amendment to you at the same time as the compliance so that there would be a solution in front of the commission at the same time. However, the applicant was not able to submit the application. And as the commission requested in January of this year, we explained there would be a hard deadline whether or not they got in their application for an amendment and we would just move forward with the compliance. So that's what we're here with this evening.
And then my second question would be, you just told us they had 28 employees on a shift. And when we talked about Nobu in the past, their application said they were gonna have six and they had 70. What was the original application when they had parking? How many employees did they say they were gonna have?
I'm sorry, I don't have that for you.
Okay. Okay, that's my questions. Any other questions?
For now.
Okay.
I have some comments, but I guess, no, okay, we're here and then.
Yeah. So what we're gonna try and do, Ken, is if you've got 15 minutes, you can take as much. And then if we have additional questions, we can bring you back and keep it going as long as till we get everything answered. Does that work for you? Huh? Doesn't he get 15?
I promise not to take it anyway, Commissioner.
No, he gets the three minutes plus one, it's oral communication. So, he can get up to eight minutes.
We'll get you back up, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. My name's Ken Erlich on behalf of the applicant. Let me try to, first of all, let me introduce Thomas Leonard, who's the overall manager of Soho House, who's been here before as well. Dave Stewart, who's the site manager, who is new to this meeting, but has been in place for a number of months. My colleague Monica Bressenio is here as well and will be handling part of the presentation. But let me also just try to respond directly to Commissioner Maz's comment. When we were here originally, there were issues about parking. And the main complaint was despite the fact that, by the way, our CUP doesn't say anything about where our employees can park or not park. We have required parking onsite, but we heard multiple complaints from the community members about the fact that there were employees who were taking their parking spaces on PCH as well as their guests. So we had, if, I don't know, I think you were here, Commissioner Maz, and I know you were in fact, that the gist of the complaints were the fact that there were allegations that there were random employees of either of the two businesses and they were parking on PCH and I live in a condo nearby and my guests can't park. So immediately upon hearing that, what Soho House did was take the initiative and started leasing the enclave parking. It was in, I want to say, fall of 2017 when we documented that with the city and provided the city with all that information. There was no information or no allegations about noise coming off the property at that point and any sort of noise violations about having amplified music. So it's my understanding and our trying to push for the amended CUP to deal with the parking issue and frankly, trying to figure out with staff, and there was a change of staff to Richard from a previous staff member, and also trying to deal with the city attorney's office to figure out the best way to document the parking agreement. We already have a joint parking agreement with our neighbor. Do we need a joint parking agreement with the enclave where we're leasing parking now? Can we just document that agreement and condition it appropriately before this commission? And there was back and forth and working with the city attorney and dealing with that. And candidly, we're trying to push that to get it to a head and to come to a hearing on it as quickly as possible. In the interim, there were these allegations of amplified music, which turned out to be true. And we've documented with both the chief code enforcement officer multiple times at the site along with the planning staff as to exactly what happened and what we've done to remedy it. So we're here now with the CUP amendment in that context. But let me introduce Monica to go over.
You've got another minute if you need it.
I'll let Monica take it, but I just wanted to make sure that there was a direct answer to the question about what's been going on and how, what at least the applicant has been doing to respond to it.
Okay, thank you. Monica, and you've got three minutes.
Not just one.
She's only got one.
I promise I won't take more than maybe one. Good evening Commissioners, my name is Monica Bressenio, also here for the applicant. I'll keep my comments brief and they're really three points that I'm gonna make tonight. We hope that you had an opportunity to read the letter that we submitted earlier today that lays out a longer explanation of the history and what led us to submit this CUP amendment with the city and continuing to move that forward. The three points I want to emphasize today are first, and really emphasize our thanks to staff and commissioners for all of your help in really trying to find a solution to this issue. We trust that we are near the end and are very close to formalizing the final agreement to resolve this. Second is I want to touch on what Ken said as far as what our amendment is. Is, it is the culmination of a lot of months and a lot of discussions between city staff and the assistant city attorney dealing with how we would formalize our parking agreement. It is now in with the commission, I mean, I'm sorry, the city. And we are hoping to continue those discussions and bring it to this commission in the next few months. Finally, we hope that in that amendment, the solutions that we propose will address the concerns that the neighbors have had regarding both music and parking, including some of the concerns that we believe were raised tonight that we feel will be effectively addressed by allowing employees to park offsite and not take up parking on PCH. That said, I'll leave time for questions. We are here, like Ken said, to answer anything you might have and we thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I've got a speaker slip from Dave Stewart, do you want to speak?
Good evening Commissioners. So I'm Dave Stewart, the general manager at Little Beach House. And I think just the main message that I want to deliver to you is that, you know, we just want to, we want to maintain a kind of an open door policy with the community and with our neighbors and always be good neighbors and good community members. You know, we want to make sure that they know that when there is or may be a concern that we're ready to just address it immediately. And we just want to be, you know, on everybody's side and doing all we can for the community.
Okay, thank you very much. I've got now three other speaker slips. Richard Gibbs, Keegan Gibbs, and Mr. Harrington. Yeah, come on down.
Evening Commissioner. As a resident, I've been, oh, sorry, Keegan Gibbs. As a resident of Malibu, lifelong resident of Malibu, and a member at the Little Beach House for the last three years since it opened, I just wanted to kind of publicly give my vote of confidence to what Little Beach House has given the community and myself included. As a younger member of the community, there's not a whole lot to do in terms of arts in the community. A place where we can screen films for the community, a place where we can have talks about environment, a place where you can have talks about latest, the comings of the artists in the neighborhood. And the Little Beach House really has given us that opportunity. And it'd be a shame that the CUP would prohibit any sort of amplified music because it's not that place that in your mind that you may think it's amplified music. It's just a club where people are spitting DJs. It's restricted a lot of positive impact that can be had on our community. So I'm just here to give my vote of confidence as a member of the community and of the Beach House.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Harrington?
Hi, everybody. My name is Ayman Harrington and I'm here like Keegan to give my vote of support to the Little Beach House and the activities that go on there. I've been living in Malibu for 25 years and raised my four kids here and I have a business here in town. Recently, a new business here in town as well. And I guess, you know, politically, over the years, I could be classified as a no-growth or certainly a slow-growth and most of the time a no-growth kind of a guy. So I'm not the kind of person that sort of wants to see Malibu turn into a, you know, another loud beach community. That said, you know, like many of us, you know, I've been hungry for things to do here in town over the years to, so they didn't have to ride into Santa Monica or Hollywood or over the hill. And, you know, when a place like Little Beach House comes along to, and provides the kind of artistic entertainment that it does on occasion, that's a real welcome, I think, for those of us in town who are able to take advantage of that. I mentioned a new business that I have. You know, about a year ago, I opened a gallery here in town and a few of you guys have been there over the year. And in the evenings, we often will, you know, present various kinds of entertainment. So we'll have some musical performances, we'll have readings, we'll have political debates around the fires. We were hosting something called the Phoenix Salons where we opened our doors and people would come in and talk about their experiences with the fire. And one of the things that I noticed is that whenever we have an event, people come. People from town come because they're hungry to do something in the evenings in Malibu that, so they don't think of jumping in the car and driving someplace else. So from personal experience, I see it happening. People are always saying, "What's happening at the gallery? What's happening at the gallery?" I've been a member of the Little Beach House for two years and I've taken advantage many times of the events that take place there. And I've always noticed that these guys have been incredibly respectful of the neighbors and, you know, nothing ever really gets too out of hand there as far as I've ever seen. So I'm here to lend my voice of support to Little Beach House and I hope that whatever, you know, whatever compromises can be made, can be made.
Great, thank you very, very much. Richard?
How you gentlemen doing?
Hey, Bonnie. I'm Richard Gibbs, for the record. I'm here in several capacities. I am a founding member, like my son, Keegan, of the Little Beach House. So obviously, I'm in support of it. But my background is I was a keyboard player in a band called Oingo Boingo. I'm a producer, I'm a film composer, and I'm a recording studio owner. So if you guys want to talk about acoustics and complaints, bring it here. I'm the guy that can address a lot of this. And actually, it's my fault as much as anybody else's that there were noise complaints because I was hosting Live Music Night once a month there that apparently some people didn't. I think I just had the wrong style of music or something, I don't know. But that was shut down because of a complaint. And it was kind of, from my point of view, it was a real shame because we would have 80 to 100 people come and have a lovely night under the stars listening to live music. It wasn't loud. I, trust me, I know what volume is. This wasn't that loud. But some people, they just hear music, it's too loud for them. And I don't know how to address that. But another part of what I wanted to address here is I was a founding member of the, you know, Cultural Arts Commission here in Malibu and the former chairman of that. And I also started something called, it was my brainchild if you were, something called the Malibu Salon Series. And a, kind of the reason that I was asked to join that commission and a central motivation I have moving forward, and which John knows, he and I have talked about this, is the need in this community for some kind of performing arts center, some kind of visual arts center. There isn't one in Malibu. The Little Beach House has filled that gap very nicely right now as best they can within the limitations of the law. And I think they've done a beautiful job of doing that and I've certainly been in support of that. I found that they did a much better job than I could with the city as the, you know, running the Cultural Arts Commission. There's only so much we could do. Now I run a breakfast every Monday morning called the Composer's Breakfast Club at the Little Beach House. And we have, we have public speakers of all types. It's not just about music, it's not just composers that come. And it's a great community building exercise. I've been doing it for five years. I started it before the Little Beach House came into existence and now we have our forever home there. And we're really happy to have that. It's been really a huge blessing to the community that they host us. And I sure would hate to see this in any way be impacted. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Gibbs, thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak on this topic? If so, if not, we're gonna close the public hearing. We may bring Ken up for some more questions, but it's back up to the table right now. Anybody want to start? I'll ask a couple of staff questions. Richard, Ken mentioned that there is no requirement that they park onsite. And it's my understanding that all businesses in Malibu have to park onsite. And that was a condition, is that, am I incorrect?
It's, sorry, I was trying to find that condition on the right conditional use permit here. There is a condition on this particular one. And this is the issue here. Is that, it's question 18. They are required under their conditional use permit, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time finding here. They're required under their conditional use permit to park onsite. It states that employee parking for the proposed use, yeah, conditional reading, employee parking for the proposed use shall be maintained onsite and/or offsite as provided by city codes and ordinances. And the issue we're having here is that we would have to amend this because we're not parking onsite. And so there is some disagreement between the applicant's attorney and the city's city attorney regarding how the parking can. city attorney regarding how the parking can be achieved, uh, or how, how they proposed it in the past. And what we would recommend is that we modify the conditional use permit to give us the tools to allow for the parking should it be deemed okay for them to find some other area to park their employees, uh, to modify that con, condition. If the planning commission approves something like that at a, at the hearing when the CUP is brought forward.
Okay, well, my second part of the question is patrons. Is not the mu, does not the municipal code say that any business must park their patrons and employees on-site?
In general, yes.
Well, unless they have a variance?
The, the code requires a certain amount of on-site parking with the assumption in the code that that on-site parking will be enough to meet the need. And that's what was done here when this project was previously, uh, before the planning commission, uh, when the, the structure, I believe, I want to say was, uh, '07 timeframe, maybe '09. Using the city's codes as guidelines, the service area was calculated and a certain parking load, uh, was determined because it's believed that under typical circumstances, that parking load, uh, the calculations that were used would provide enough on-site parking to accommodate the employees as well as the patrons of the site. However, during the course of operation, it's become apparent that the parking that they're using, um, while they are meeting the city's codes, is not enough parking. And, uh, just once again, going back to that one condition, there is a condition that was placed on this project to prevent parking on Pacific Coast Highway. However, it wasn't worded that way, it just was worded with the term "off-site." So, essentially, any off-site parking would be in violation of that conditional use permit condition.
Okay, so, so you can, you have to park on-site. A co, way it stands now, um... Was there a limitation on how many members they could have or, or how much business they could do?
The business was only limited by the hours of operation. There was a condition that the commission asked for, uh, in the most recent amendment that required, uh, a certain membership amount be from the, the Malibu zip code. The only other restriction placed on how many folks they can have in there is the occupancy load of the building.
Okay, and has the service area changed since the, uh, parking conditions were made?
No, they've maintained a, a consistent service area. There was a, um, amendment that was processed before the commission for a modification to the outside bar, but that did not change the service area. That area was already counted as service area in the original approval.
Okay, there's also a condition, as I understand it, that said, uh, all valets must operate on-site. Is that correct?
I believe you are correct. And from what we can tell, they have not entered into any sort of off-site valet agreements. Uh, it's employee self-parking is my understanding on the neighboring property, or, I say neighboring, but at the enclave property.
Okay, so if I see somebody running across the highway with a valet, black and white pants, and, and white shirt and black pants and valet thing, they're either from Nobu or Soho. One of the two is violating that condition?
If that's what you observe, yes. As far as staff's aware of, it's employee self-parking.
So, right now, if their valets go off-site, that, that's a violation?
Yes, that'd be correct.
Okay, um, now, they have a parking agreement with, uh, Nobu that gives up 10 spaces to Nobu, uh, of their spaces, their quote excess spaces. If... But there's a, 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 a condition in the municipal code that says if you need the spaces, you can't lease them out. Is there any conflict here in the fact that Nobu is using their spaces and that they are asking for off-site spaces when they have on-site spaces?
At the time that agreement was approved by the planning commission, the evidence that was in the record suggested that that would be a okay situation, essentially where Soho was a donor site and Nobu was using those spaces. However, if the commission believes that there is an issue there, that is something that the commission could modify.
Well, my reason I'm asking that question is apparently they're going to ask for off-site parking when they have on-site parking. So, Trevor, is there a, a natural conflict there?
Uh, a, a natural conflict between what?
Between, uh, what the municipal code says you cannot lease your spaces out if you need them and then they're asking for spaces off-site?
I'm not sure which provision you're referring to exactly. Um, it might be related to required parking being rented out and this, th, th, there's, there's an issue here in terms of, I believe the joint parking agreement preceded Soho. I think that was, it was pre-existing. And Nobu has already, they have a separate CUP that requires those, those, uh, the spots to be located on Soho. So, there'd be a problem if you tried to reopen the joint use parking agreement.
Okay, but that's, that's not before us now because we're not considering off-site parking as being legal, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, the way we're looking at it now is they are illegally parking off-site. Or I shouldn't say illegal, outside of the provisions of municipal code.
The, the joint use parking agreement between, um, Soho, well, we're calling it Soho and Nobu, but they were different. There were no restaurants designated at the time. When those, um, agreements were approved, um, it was in accordance with the municipal code based on the city's, um, existing parking standards. So, it's, it, you can't in hindsight look at it now as it was approved, um, legally at the time and so it's still legal today. So, I, I, the way you're describing it, it sounds like you're...
Well, you're saying that, that agreement was with, between two different parties. They've changed.
It runs with the land.
Yeah, it runs with the land, so...
A, a legal parking agreement runs with the land?
The joint use parking agreement is required and does run with the land.
It's not a, it's not a contract.
It's, it's, it runs with the land, there might be a contract, private contract associated with it, but I think it's owned by the same property owner between them.
The...
I think they're tied together.
Yeah, and it's related to the conditional use permits that run with the land.
Okay, um, that, that won't come up until the next hearing anyway. Um, uh, now, Richard, um, one of the problems, one of the off-site, well, actually a guy talked to me about a year ago said was that there is no entrance to Soho on the Soho property. Is that according to the, the parking plan? That they, they have one entrance for both parcels and, uh, and that the exit on Soho is just an exit?
The applicant can speak to that better, they're bit better and more familiar with the layout than I am, but, um, it's a common driveway and both Nobu and Soho utilize that driveway. And then the exit to Nobu is at the corner closest to the condos. And then Soho's exit is, um, to the westernmost property line.
Yeah, my question is, is that the original parking plan? Is that was, was that approved in the CUP as their parking plan?
Yes, and it, it's compliant, Mr. Com, Commissioner Mazza. Yes.
It is, if I look up the old CUP, it says, "We're only going to exit on that property."
Yes.
Okay, I will look it up.
Please.
Okay, um, now, this is a more general question. One of the things you're asking us to do is, is set up a, another hearing, I guess, on, uh, a CDPA. And...
CUPA.
CUPA. And my question is, Richard, um, does the... Before I can make a motion or do anything on that, I need to know, is any of what is proposed le, uh, in our codes? So, my understanding, our codes say you must park within 300 feet of foot traffic of the building and that any building you lease space in must be extra spaces, uh, not spaces used for that building. And, and we got the CUP for the enclave from you and it says you need 95 spaces and they have 95. So, are we setting up a hearing that, that needs a coastal amendment?
I believe the provision you're talking about deals with required parking has to be relocated within 300 feet. I think that's the one you're, you're, you're looking at. And this situation, the required parking is all on-site, this would be additional parking. They're looking to try to, um, eliminate what's a, what's been complained about as a nuisance in terms of, um, employees and other people parking on PCH or in other locations. Um, but we shouldn't go too far down the road of the potential LCP amendment that application's been turned in and then that comes in before you, then you can get into these issues right now.
We don't have to deal with the CUPA at all tonight?
Not tonight, no, you're just looking at the compliance with the, with the current CUP.
Because, uh...
We can't set a hearing yet and...
Okay.
On the, on the CUP.
So, we don't, that's...
It's, it's not complete and it, it just came in.
So, we don't do number two of the recommendation?
What's number two?
Hold a meeting. Staff calendars, that, right?
Yeah, staff will do the calendaring.
Okay. So, we're just reviewing what they're doing now?
Yes.
Okay. Ken, question? Obviously, you, you, you've known about all these things for, you know, all the conditions for several years. Why do we have, why did we have all the noise violations?
The noise violations, uh, you know, th, they're interesting, Commissioner. The, the bottom line is, and I've said this before, our operation screwed up and that there, there were problems. I mean, the, i, the, the, the latest example for, just so you're aware, my understanding is, is that there was an impromptu member who started playing trombone on an unamplified system and just playing the trombone, but it was heard and it was reported and we confirmed that that's exactly what happened. So, the issue was i, in our minds, regardless of what the CUP says, and I'm not saying we're right or we're wrong, but the interpretation was, long as it wasn't amplified and it's not going off our, you know, the city's municipal code, we thought we were fine. The city code enforcement staff told us we weren't. We, we met twice and we agreed and we stopped it. So, to, to that extent, you know, w, we took responsibility for the problem. We've even canceled subsequent events to not even threaten the issue. For example, you know, New Year's Eve was completely canceled at Soho House, so it was to prevent any possibility of there being an issue. And, and that's exactly what we want to, so i, in response, we also did our own noise study on our own nickel and came up with solutions we think are practical and staff has it and staff needs to work it up to maintain, uh, sound in an area that will do the best we can acoustically to maintain the noise on our site in accordance with the city code.
That's, that's, that's another hearing.
Uh, absolutely, but I wanted to give you a complete answer and, and tell you what, what we're trying to do to, to deal with the issue. Eliminate it and then make it permanent.
Yeah, go, go ahead, somebody else.
Two quick things about the parking and then I'd like to talk about the, the music and sound. On enclave, their CDP talks about allocating spaces to the public on weekends and holidays and that's when this would be happening. So, don't we have to hear from coastal about whether they need those spaces still or what the status is of those is?
It's another hearing.
So, that's another hearing, okay. Um, and then there are ballards outstanding and if somebody probably wants to talk about that. What's the deal with those? Those are happening, that's all good?
They, they're working with staff, I'm getting a design.
Okay. Okay, so let, let me talk about music some. I, I have a background in music and, and sound design and studio design also, not quite as illustrious as yours, but, um, I understand a lot of this stuff and I was around when Pasquale's Jazz Club was happening from '78 to '83 and there was loud live music here pretty much every night. And I don't know, you know, the neighborhood's changed, but, um, I also appreciate very deeply the notion of music as part of community and, and how that can, that doesn't necessarily have to mean disco or something loudly amplified, but just you have an upright piano there. It'd be great if on occasion you could have a, whatever it is, a poetry reading with a little jazz thing, something acoustic. There's, there's a middle ground here. And I, I think it, y, you start out by talking about what, what's in the CUP. It talks about live or amplified and that's a relative distinction because it's live music if you sing "Happy Birthday" to somebody at your party. And it's amplified if you're wearing earbuds because everybody's iPhone has an amplifier in it. So, where do you draw that line? There's, there's got to be some threshold of what's reasonable and to find that, I would look to other parts of the noise code then.
Greg?
Yeah?
The noise piece is really part of another hearing we're going to have.
Is it?
Yeah, it's, it's, they're asked, because right now it's prohibited, so if you're looking at...
But, but I'm, my point is what's prohibited is, is...
That it is.
There's an absolute, there, there's a relative level.
No, it's absolutely prohibited. Right now, it is what it is, so I think we've got to just live with what it is. They're going to bring back the noise thing, I will take a look at it.
You don't want to bias.
Right, yeah.
Until you get the evidence.
Okay.
Commissioner Hill, if I could only just add one point, and, and I, I candidly agree with what your co-commissioners said. We retained Vena Clausen because we were told that that's the best of the best in sound engineering. The city staff has the report. I think we'd be particularly interested to hear input from you o, on the report and what we're trying to do. I mean, we're talking about central controls over volume, limits on decibels, et cetera. I mean, we're told it's state-of-the-art what we're trying to propose and it's up for, you know, it's a, up for discretionary approval at some future hearings, so we invite your input.
But to the extent that it's within my ability without compromising some conflict of interest thing or something, I'd be happy to talk, but I don't know how far I'm allowed to go with that.
No, it, it, it's, we'll, we'll wait till the, uh, set report comes out and then you can, we'll discuss it at the public hearing. I don't have anything now.
Commissioner Marks?
No, nothing on my side.
That's your Jennings. Nothing, okay. Interesting. I've just got a couple. The, uh, I did appreciate the walkthrough I got through the other day, I think I learned a lot about that. Uh, I disagree with the email that you wrote us. I, I'm, I'm not sure which commissioners you were talking about that had visited Soho and said the parking was okay. I don't know, I don't know who that was directed toward. You sent, there was a letter we got from you today.
Right.
Okay, and the front part said that the city staff, somebody else and pub, planning commissioners had visited the site and determined that your parking thing was okay.
Our, our statement was that we meet their parking requirements.
Have you said, just saying, you said the planning commissioners agreed to that and that, I'm not sure who, who the planning commissioners were you were referring to.
I, I don't, i, if, if our letter referred to any of you, that's not our intent, so...
Okay, I just, that was just...
Fair enough.
Look, the, the, and, and do a couple of things. One, let me just jump over here for a second to parking, okay? Here's why I'm going to be reluctant to do too much with parking in the short run. We've got the Malibu Beach Inn, we've got Nobu, and God knows how many other people are looking to find parking offs, off-site someplace. What we need is a plan. We need a plan. We need a plan that says, "How's the city going to deal with this?" Because if we do all these things as one-off little projects, it's going to be a mess. So, this is a time for the planning department to put on their planning hats and let's figure out what the appropriate, look, we can't wait for the city council to always tell us what to do. Sometime we gotta, you know, they can tell us if, well, if we come up with a plan they don't like it, they can tell us that, you know, to take a hike with it, but I think we got to start planning because things are changing and, and, look, you've got, like I said, you've got Malibu Beach Inn, you've got, uh, Nobu, you've got the guy that, what's that Sands Shopping Center down there? The guy wants to put another, uh, thing on top of that and that's already underparked. Where the hell are we going to put all these people? All right, I mean, we got to have a plan, otherwise the bu, you know, I got a choice, Ken, cut down the amount of business you're doing. We're not going to do that. I think part of our responsibility up here is to do two things. One, to take care of the quality of life, protect the quality of life of the Malibu residents. Second, one way protecting the quality of life of the Malibu residents is making sure the businesses that are doing business in Malibu are successful, right? I mean, so I think that's part of what we should be taking a look at and it's what I want to take a look at when we start doing parking. We'll see where that takes us. Here's going to be my, I would like to make a motion. Okay, and, and I want to go back just through the noise thing and, and look, I, I just think we owe it to the residents, you know, I, I got six noise complaints, six videos, all right? Uh, that's a lot, all right? So, what I would like to do is continue this hearing. Have them come back in, in August, latest, and hopefully by that time have solutions to what we're going to do for parking, have solutions for the Ballard thing and have whatever they're going to give us for the, uh, noise component. And hopefully in the interim, nobody else complains, right? That's good for you and good for us.
I- i- if I may, Mr. Chair, Au- August is right in the, you know, right in the summer, right when members use the club the most.
Okay.
It, it was, it's been our intent and the direction from our client to try to push staff to get this issue resolved as quickly as possible. Um, you know, for example, we submitted the parking thing back in twenty-seventeen. I, I respect exactly what you're saying, and, and if that's the way it's gonna be, that's the way it's gonna be, but we certainly wanna resolve this issue sooner rather than later.
I don't have a problem if the parking comes back to us earlier than that, okay? Or the, or, or the, and the noise thing, okay? All I'm saying, the, the, in August, I wanna do a review that sort of says we had no more complaints. We have seen progress on these things, okay? We're doing something, because I don't wanna wait for another yearly compliance review for three years, or however long it took us.
But in the meantime, can staff process the CUP amendment?
The CUP amendment will travel independently of the review. The review's independent if the CUP amendment comes before, that may eliminate the need for the review.
Yeah, I will second that, and the reason I think August is a good date is for that very reason. Uh, Steve talked about quality of life in Malibu. Number one, if you ask anybody in Malibu in every survey we ever take, is safety on coast highway. And, quite frankly, there's a major question. If you took all of coast highway and you took the quarter mile between, either way of, of Nobu and, and Soho House and a bunch of others, that's the most unsafe place on the highway. So, that's quality of life, and summers when we look at it. So, um, I agree with Steve's motion, I second it because that's when we'll be getting the complaints if something's not being done right.
And, and let me assure you, I, I do wanna see a parking solution, right? I mean, it's, like I said, it's not only you, we're gonna, we got a bunch of people. This is gonna be an ongoing train of people coming in and saying, you know, things aren't working. Uh, I don't wanna hurt the business. Uh, I don't wanna, you know, get the people near the businesses upset because they can't get guests in. So there's, we gotta come up with a solution. So that's, I'm just gonna keep pushing that and see where that train takes us.
So, just to, just to make sure I understand, we are processed, we, we requested the CUP amendment some time ago. It finally came in, like, last week. Um, so we're processing that as quickly as we can. Um, it needs to be reviewed by, um, internal departments and all of that stuff. I don't know if we have a schedule yet, so I'm reluctant to set a date for a CUP amendment hearing right at this moment, but we'll, I agree with you, it's, we wanna get that back to you as soon as possible. So, but you're asking to also calendar a separate compliance hearing?
Asking to continue this compliance hearing.
Just to continue is to come back and make sure that, see where we are, right?
Would you rather wait and, and do that at the time we do the CUP amendment?
No, 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 let's get it set up so we know we gotta come.
The reason I would not like to wait is because, well, number one, it's been a year and a half since, since they were working on this. So, we'll see what got turned in. And number two, there's more than the CUP amendment that is a problem here. There's other items that have not been complied with, and we're gonna review those also. And, um, for example, valets going off the lot. That is, from my experience, not credible, that they don't do it.
Okay, would, would, nobody has, to my knowledge, filed a complaint about that.
I'm just saying, we wanna review everything in August. And the CUPA is a different tract. Now, I would like you to come back personally with a CUPA that follows the coastal plan and recognizes that, for example, the enclave has an obligation to rent their spaces to the public, and blah, 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 all that, all those conditions, and not have to have us deal with something that needs a coastal amendment.
I would prefer to have them come back with a, with a, a part of a plan, a plan for these guys that is part of a larger plan of how we're gonna deal with parking.
Well, and, and just to say a word on that, the, the city council, I mean, I, I, I don't disagree that, you know, planning staff can propose things and, and float them up to the city council. The city council has given us quite a list of things to work on, however, and I think it would also be a good idea to bring this up with your council members if, um, if it's something that's a priority.
Okay, I, I have no problem doing it, but I'm, I'm gonna be, we're, we're, we're gonna be really hard-pressed. If, if we make a decision for these folks, that's gonna set a precedent for all the other guys that are coming down the pipe.
I, I, I don't, I don't think you, I don't think you're boxed in that narrowly because there are, while we need to pay attention to consistency and things like that, there are site-specific conditions and, and things that, that apply.
Yeah, but now I'm, I'm picking at hairs, all right? I mean, I'm just saying, when you, and I'll talk to whoever we can on the city council to talk about that.
Trevor, a question, just because we're going to probably talk to our council members. If they're a member of Soho House, uh, they're recused? This is not an ordinance.
What are we, uh, depends on what we're talking about. How about, oh, just let him know about parking they wouldn't be recused from if it's a citywide situation? If you're talking about, if you're talking about a CUP amendment for Soho House, there could be a conflict in that situation.
Ken? Shouldn't talk to them, then.
If, I think Bonnie was suggesting that you contact your council member to suggest that they prioritize putting in a, a citywide parking plan.
Okay.
Ken, anything that we, that you wanna say that we did not get to, that is... No, I, we're comfortable, the clarification that we're on two separate tracks, I think we're comfortable with that. Also, um, I, I just wanna clarify as well, is, a side fact, I think that Commissioner Mazza raised earlier. My understanding of Soho House's employees is that it peaks at twenty-eight, but not every shift of their twenty-eight employees. So, i- if there's additional information that the, the, the commission wants on that, we're happy to provide it, but I just wanna...
That should be in the amendment.
That, that's fine, that's fine, but, uh, and, and we'll put it in, okay?
Go ahead.
A point of clarification on the code. This, the condition here about the noise refers to Section L commercial, that applies to "commercial establishments adjacent to residential property." There's no residential property adjacent, right? So, I just wanted, i- is there?
Yeah, it's a motel.
Is that deemed residential? That's a commercial property too, right? So, uh, this, this, the, the notion that we're holding them to this, this Section L, granted, it's written into the CUP, but that language says adjacent to. So, anybody who's complaining on the beach is not really part of the class that's being protected here.
You have to remember Nobu has residents next to it, so these things all get tied together.
But that's, okay, but that's neighborhood, but it's not adjacent.
Look, noise is an issue.
Can I ask you one question that's probably not your main, and that is, when we get to noise, and I haven't been in Soho since a year or so, are there interior spaces that can handle the size of musical events you have been having?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, we've got a motion, we have a...
I don't think, I don't think we actually had the motion. I think you discussed making a motion, but...
I made it. Oh, he made it, and I second it.
What's, can, can we repeat the motion?
The motion is that, uh, we, we continue this hearing.
To a date in August?
Date in August, they come back, we continue the, the, uh, administrative work on both the parking submittal they've got and the noise submittal.
Okay, so the CUP amendment, you don't need to make any motion about that, that's just gonna be taken care of by staff, it's already processed. So then the motion, um, is just to continue the review to a date in August?
Yes.
Was there, who's the motion?
I made the motion, you got a second.
Okay.
Kathleen, can we have a roll call?
Chair hearing.
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Marks.
Yes.
Vice Chair Jennings. Motion carries.
Move, we adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
All right.